I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the December 19th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Ashland City Council. Councillor Dale will offer the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Kierakutsum Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands. Sorry, it cut off when I had it. It's cut off on our agenda. Pardon me. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Tukelma, and Athavaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta Village of Kwakaa, where the crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you. And Councillor Hanson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hanson?
Here.
Duquesne?
Here.
Kaplan?
Here.
Dale?
Here.
Bloom?
Here.
Hyatt?
For Mayor's announcements, a couple of things. The solar trackers have been lifted up at the civic center just in the back here, just past the parking lot. They will be operational soon, but we're very glad to see the investment from the state of Oregon in our solar power, increased solar power in Ashland coming to fruition. The Transportation Advisory Committee has a survey online that you can find through the news elements of our website. They are looking at a bike parking inventory and improvement project. So they're looking for community feedback about where we don't have adequate bicycle parking. So if you have thoughts about that, please fill that survey out online. Also, the city is taking applications or nominations for the James Ragland Community Service Award that will be, it will be given out in January. So if you know of someone who has dedicated a large number of volunteer service hours to the city of Ashland, please consider nominating them. And then also just to save the date, the town hall that we, our second annual big town hall in January will be held on January 24th from 5:30 to 7:30. So please mark your calendars. And with that, we will move on to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections for the minutes? Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one correction. So for our council meeting from December 5th, on page eight in the packet, it says, "Hyatt Bloom, amend motion to require housing services report back in six months." I believe in the meeting, we actually said homeless services master plan subcommittee was going to do that review and report back in six months.
Councillor Hyatt?
I would also add that it was not an amend. It was a standalone. So the word amend was not used in the verbiage.
Okay. So those, both of those corrections?
Yes, please.
Okay. And the floor is open for a motion to accept the minutes as corrected. Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from our December 5th regular business as well as the December 4th study session with corrections.
Roll call, please.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Great. So we do not have any special presentations this evening, so we will move on to the public forum. While the forums are coming up, I want to make sure that everyone who is here in the building with us this evening knows how to sign up to speak to the council this evening. The yellow forums on the back wall there are the signup forums. If you would like to talk with the council tonight, please make sure that you fill it out and that you indicate on that forum if you are coming for a public, the public forum section, which we're coming to right now, which is where you would talk to us about anything that is not on the agenda. Or if you are here to speak to us about an agenda item, please make sure that you clearly identify that agenda item. And that allows us to bring you up at the right time to speak to council. So we have three people who have, four, let me check here. Avram? I just have a quick question for you. I'm not sure if it's during public forum or not. I will go ahead and put that in during public forum. So we have six people and we will give everyone three minutes. So please come up in this order. Mark Bruilhard and then Letta Shapiro, followed by Sitka Moss and Amanda Morehouse. Pardon me. Yeah, yeah, go ahead and come up two by two if you would. And please speak directly into the microphone and say your name and where you, the city that you live.
Mark Bruilhard, Ashland, Oregon. Good evening, councillors. One small clerical issue to start with and maybe some definitions need to be had, and also what happened to our new ambulance? Let's start with our new ambulance. I got, I got pretty wrecked a short time ago, bad rearing crash. Matter of fact, I got food barred. That was our brand new ambulance. One thing I haven't heard of or seen is about the investigation. Who's doing the investigation or anything else of that nature? I think this should become the forerion because this is taxpayers' money. And it's also a form of when it's going to function again. Because currently, that was our brand new ambulance. It's no longer in service. I'm thinking public safety and clarity should be top importance on this. Amus is our priority important. The clerical issue is fairly simple. And this is mainly for those of those who work in the media. It's called handyman hardware. That is the name of the former business of 2200 Ashen Street, not Ace Hardware. So please don't confuse or tarnish a good business with one that went belly up. I'm looking at you, KOB I-12, KDRV-10, and KTVL-5. If you understand that, it's a dull joke because those aren't the right numbers for their station. And as Whitney Houston would say, "I believe that children are our future." Those that are not intentionally homeless are not the future. Weather record intentionally is defined as purposely, deliberately, or willfully. Children are still in the learning change phase of their lives, adults not so much. But with adult thing comes huge responsibility in teaching up and not teaching lies is one of them. And as Whitney Houston would say, "Teach them well and let them lead the way." Trail of Tears, George Washington, and indoctrination of children. The Trail of Tears is not about the Native Americans being so happy and joyful that they were crying over new lands. Just George Washington owned slaves, but he did so much more than that. And a homeless shelter is good. No need to have law and order or actual consequences for not being a law-abiding citizen. That's called indoctrination. That's the last three things my eighth grader has learned in school. The last thing he was told before he left school on Friday was how good the homeless shelter was. That's indoctrination. You're trying to politicize children. That's our school district. They should never do that. Teach them math, you know? Our scores are abhorrent. The Trail School has the lowest math rate of any school of its age in the state. I think that's a little bit more important. Teach them cause and effect, consistency, rules of order, what makes a society. And maybe some relevant history that includes such things as slavery, the Holocaust, genocide, and things we don't want to repeat again. When I told my eighth grader that the building costs $2 million to buy and tens of thousands to run per month, he replied, "That doesn't seem fair." Imagine a child saying something doesn't seem fair. Instead of thinking about the children in their education, we spend countless hours on 5G for what maybe 1% of the population doesn't want. Instead of thinking about the children in their education, we spend countless hours on what about what you should do for the homeless population, which is most likely less than five, less than a half a percent of our population. Instead of thinking about children in their education, we worry about eight cyclists a day who use a road compared to 14,000 vehicles, or 0.6% of the actual users. Seems like we might want to redefine what is equitable. If we want to talk about 1% of our population and make rules for just them, doesn't seem to be fair and equitable. 99% of the folks who pay for it with their taxes and follow rules have consequences when they're not followed. Let's look at 1% for a moment. That's the percentage of the USA population that is homeless children. You prioritize that first, and then maybe I will support you on different items. But seeing the rubbish Ashland schools is pushing on our children, pure prolific bovine defecation. And speaking of defecation, it was super nice to see a guy covered in crap in front of my kid today.
Thank you. Letta, you'll be up next. And then just as a reminder, Alyssa will give everyone one single chime when you have 20 seconds left of your three minutes, and then a double chime when you've reached the end of that time. Go ahead, Letta.
Hi. I'm coming to this council to bring up a concern about the city's hiring practices and my rights as a citizen and resident of Ashland. At the end of November, I sent in a PRR asking for information regarding an employee promotion and questions about our hiring practices. After several weeks of not getting a response, I only received part of what I requested. I was then told the city had no obligation and would not be answering my query about hiring practices. In addition, I am now told by the city attorney that I must discontinue these questions about the subject. The city of Ashland states on the Ashland City website the following. All employment opportunities with the city of Ashland and Parks and Recreation are posted on our employment page first. The city of Ashland is an equal opportunity employer and will not discriminate against employee or applicant for employment because of race, color, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, marital status, national origin, or mental or physical disability unless based on a bona fide occupational qualification. I could have probably left that out. Despite these stated policies, I am aware that vacant positions have been filled without posting them on the job opportunities page first and without accepting applications from the public. I have been told that it is not legally required to supply me this information. Not that there's anything wrong with hiring from within, it's just that the application for the position should be open to everyone. This may seem to you as an unimportant detail since we've been able to fill vacant positions with interim staff. But if the goal is to have a diverse, experienced, competent staff, we need to actually open these vacancies to the public to apply. As a city that professes progressive ideals, we will never achieve our goals of diversity if we continue to withhold these job opportunities from the public. And isn't the public entitled to know whether the city's own procedures are being followed?
Thank you. Next, we have Sitka Moss and Amanda Morehouse, followed by Avram Sacks.
My name is Sitka from Trail, and I'm here with a group asking for you guys to sign a letter similar to the talent letter calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. And I'd like to read you guys a poem by Zeina Azam. It's called "Write My Name on My Leg Mama." Write my name on my leg, mama. Use the black permanent marker with the ink that doesn't bleed if it gets wet, the one that doesn't melt if it's exposed to heat. Write my name on my leg, mama. Make the lines thick and clear. Add your special flourishes so I can take comfort in seeing my mama's handwriting when I go to sleep. Write my name on my leg, mama, and on the legs of my sisters and brothers. This way, we will belong together. This way, we'll be known as your children. Write my name on my leg, mama, and please write your name and Baba's name on your legs too, so we will be remembered as a family. Write my name on my leg, mama. Don't add any numbers, like when I was born or the address of our home. I don't want the world to list me as a number. I have a name, and I am not a number. Write my name on my leg, mama, so when the bomb hits our house, when the walls crush our skulls and bones, our legs will tell our story, how there was nowhere for us to run. You guys have more power than each individual one of us to ask for a ceasefire. And so we're here to ask you guys to endorse a letter that gets sent to our representatives so that we can come together and push for this atrocity to stop. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Morehouse. I'm here requesting that you all sign a letter for a ceasefire similar to what Talent did. Like Sitka said, we know that you all have the power to reach people that we don't have the power to reach. We know that our money is being used to fund military aid to Israel to enact these atrocities. It's been happening for over 70 days plus 75 years before. But I want to show or say, just this weekend, what happened, and just five points of things that happened this weekend. Israeli soldiers bulldozed 20-plus sick and injured Palestinians sheltering in a hospital courtyard, burying them alive. Israeli snipers killed a mother and daughter sheltering inside Gaza's only Catholic church. Israeli soldiers destroyed another cemetery in Gaza. Israel bombed the maternity ward of Nasser Hospital in Gaza. Israel invaded Palestinian cities and refugees camps in the West Bank. You all have a direct line to legislators that is supposed to carry our voices. We urge you to support a ceasefire in Gaza. The city of Ashland is very visible in southern Oregon. That's why we're here, even if we may not live in this exact city. I spend money here, I visit here, I talk about Ashland, I love Ashland. And people visit here from all around the world in the summertime. You guys have a voice that can stand up for what? For humanity. And justice for all. At the end of the Pledge of Allegiance should be justice for everyone in the world, not just Americans, not just Americans who act right. Everyone is included in that. And reading a land acknowledgement, we can all, I hope we can all see the connection of understanding why we read a land acknowledgement is accepting and understanding how a land acknowledgement even came to be by the genocide of the people who originally lived here so that we could build our land, build up our buildings and communities and all of the things that we now look at as normal. And it's now happening in front of our eyes in 2023 in Gaza. What we talk about in history that happened to the indigenous people of this land is happening in Gaza, in Sudan, in Congo, and several other places, and continues to happen. You guys are supposed to be our voice. Please be our voice.
Thank you. Avram Sacks? Sacks?
Hi, good evening. Just to give you some little context, my mother grew up in Berlin, and she left in 1939 when she was 16. But her father couldn't get into the United States with his German passport. The United States had a quota system, so he died at Auschwitz. State Department, it turns out, knew what Hitler was planning, but didn't open up for people to come here. I'm here to say that I never thought in my lifetime I would see something similar happening before my eyes. It's horrendous what happened on October 7th. But if it's horrendous that 1,200 Israelis were killed, then how can it not be 10 times or 100 times more horrendous what Israel is doing in Gaza? It doesn't make sense to me. It can't be justified. I'm sure Hitler had plenty of reasons to justify what he did to the Jews. So we're urging you, the council, to do what the city of Talent did. I'd like to read, if I may, the short letter that they wrote. They wrote a letter because it's not a resolution. It doesn't have to go through the whole legal process of a resolution. I, Mayor Flood, on behalf of myself and the city council and the city of Talent, excuse me, motivated by deep compassion for all people who are suffering from the horrific ongoing atrocities in Palestine and Israel, urge you to demand an immediate ceasefire. By the way, this is a letter that they wrote to Senator Wyden, to Senator Merkley. We urge you to demand an immediate ceasefire and the release of all hostages and arbitrarily detained people, and to allow humanitarian aid and the suspension of further military funding to the state of Israel. So we urge you to consider a similar letter. Doesn't have to go through the whole legal process. It's just a letter that as a city council, you're writing to our congressional representatives. Senator Merkley already has called for a ceasefire, but Senator Wyden hasn't, and our congressional delegate in the House of Representatives hasn't either. And also ask them to call for a suspension of aid until Israel stops the bombing. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on now to the consent agenda. Are there any consent agenda items that councillors would like pulled? Councillor Duquesne?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull number three for a conversation, a question I have for Brandon Goldman.
Okay. Any others? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to accept the remaining items on the consent agenda. Councillor Hyatt?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item three pulled for discussion. Second.
Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Bloom?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes. And before we take up this other issue, I just wanted to welcome Allison Mendel, Nita Singh, and John Tyler to the Social Equity and Racial Justice Advisory Committee. It's great that you've stepped forward to help your community in this way. Councillor Duquesne, go ahead with issue number three.
Hi, Brandon. Thank you. Brandon, when I was reading through this, I just wanted it to be clear to our constituents how this Economic Opportunity Analysis Grant works, and the reason why we have it, and how this will impact, that fiscal impact.
Sure. Thank you, councillor and mayor. The city of Ashland council budgeted $70,000 in the last biennial budget process to fund an economic opportunity analysis. It was seen that our last EOA, Economic Opportunity Analysis, was done in 2007. And we all know that the economic conditions of Ashland have changed quite a bit since then. So this is an opportunity to look at our consumption of employment lands, look at the different employment sectors that are thriving in Ashland and which ones are not, and look at what, how we address that in the future in terms of projecting out employment growth and ensuring that we have an adequate capacity of land to accommodate that growth. So as part of this process, the state of Oregon offered a technical assistance grant for cities to look at updating outdated plans. So we applied for the Economic Opportunity Analysis Technical Assistance Grant and were awarded $60,000 by the state of Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. And this will be very useful in hiring consultants with economic development expertise to inform the development of the EOA, and will be conducted this year. In terms of the process, it will be a coordinated effort with the city of Medford. They were also fortunate to receive a grant from the state of Oregon to update their economic opportunity analysis. So we will be working with them to ensure that there is not redundancy in the work done, because we do live in one regional economy, and would like to ensure that the work that consultants do is done in a fiscally responsible way and ensure that we're not doing the same work in two adjacent jurisdictions. So that is going to kick off in the coming weeks in terms of the coordination and developing a scope of work, which would include outreach to people familiar with the economic conditions of our valleys, such as SOREDDI and large-scale employers, to understand what issues they're facing. We'll also be updating our buildable lands inventory to ensure that we have an adequate data information about what lands are available and can be developed. And with that, the consultant team and city of Ashland will prepare an economic opportunity analysis to bring back ultimately to this council for adoption as part of our consolidated or comprehensive plan, rather, as a technical support document.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. The floor is open for a motion regarding item number three. Councillor Hyatt?
I'm happy to make the motion. I move to accept the grant award and authorize the city manager to execute a final grant agreement with the Department of Land Conservation and Development for technical assistance grant to draft an economic opportunity analysis.
Second.
Councillor Hyatt?
Just real quickly to add, Brandon, thank you to you and the team. I know that you sought this grant as a result of a request from this body, specifically when we were looking at the conversation around using economic spaces as potential for housing solution. So excellent work by the team in applying for and receiving these funds so that we can move forward with the goals of the community, not only economically, but with regard to housing.
Councillor Bloom?
Yeah, no comment.
Any discussion?
Good job.
Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
So we move on to public hearings. We have first up the first reading of ordinance 3226 and ordinance establishing hours of parks closure. Welcome Leslie Eldridge from the Ashland Parks and Recreation Department. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, city councillors. I'm happy to be here today. First, I will be presenting the first reading of ordinance, proposed ordinance 3226, looking at park hours. Just to give a very quick timeline, the business, the APRC Parks Commissioner Business Meeting, October 11th. This proposed ordinance was recommended for review, unanimously recommended to city council along with internal policies that were developed by the commissioners. In November, on November 7th, I brought this very briefly to city council, but due to lack of time and one unresolved question, this was unable to be adequately addressed. So, which brings us to the present moment. As you may have read in the papers or witnessed yourself personally, our parks have experienced quite a, quite a large increase in vandalism, damaged public property, and, and there's been an increase in public safety concerns that we've heard from the public. We know that the majority of these are occurring during nighttime hours, not all, but definitely the majority. And the managing these issues has resulted in significant maintenance and financial burdens to park staff, as well as challenges to our APD officers and their efforts for public safety. Currently, the Ashland Currently, the Ashland Municipal Code provides a curfew, but it applies only to Lithia Park between the hours of 11:30 PM and 5:30 PM. This proposed amendment would establish hours of parks closure in all city parks between the hours of midnight and 5:00 AM. Now, just to clarify here, city parks is defined within the Ashland Municipal Code as all park lands. So that's our parks, trails, open space. It's all-inclusive of the lands that parks manages. So this, a proposed amendment would apply to all of those. In reference to a question that City Councillor Hyatt had on in November, after consulting and confirming with legal, it's very clear that this proposed ordinance establishes foundational baseline park hours of closure. It does not prevent Ashland Parks and Recreation from establishing more restrictive operating hours specific to parks, facilities, or equipment. So we could do that through signage, information on the web, et cetera. At the time, the question of skate park came up. We don't have lighting on skate park, at skate park that allows nighttime usage of those ramps. So that would be a situation where we would establish operating hours of closure that are more restrictive than the ordinance. This proposed ordinance has been developed in collaboration with Ashland Police and legal, will not affect, impact, or interact in any way with the proposed camping ordinance. Benefits that parks foresees, the language itself is, of the proposed ordinance is broad. It allows for transit through parks lands during nighttime hours. So the language reads that no person shall remain. This was to ensure that folks strolling, running, going to their car, transiting through the park would still have the ability to do that. Additionally, with permission through, through the process of a special permit, things like special events, like star party, for example, could, could also occur during those hours. There's a very like, high likelihood that we could see a reduction in vandalism and other abuses of public property during those nighttime hours, a potential increase in nighttime public safety. And really, this provides a tool for APD to initiate conversations with park users that are sort of hanging around or remaining in the parks during those, during those very late and very, very early hours. We do not foresee that this would increase burden, and Ashland Police Department officers rather would facilitate them doing their job more effectively. Councillor Dale? Yeah, we have some questions for you. Please, Councillor Dale.
Hi, Leslie, thank you. The first question I have is, I note that you said it was in collaboration with APD. Do you have any process or structure in place to, to measure the efficacy of this new ordinance, or what the baseline is, and then in a set few weeks, months, to see what kind of effect that has had for better or worse? How will we measure this as far as its inner workings?
I think that burden would largely fall on Ashland Police, and...
Thank you, I had a feeling.
Come on up, chief.
Just need to hear from the chief, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I think it'd be fairly easy to track it, as I've said several times before, we keep pretty detailed stats at the police department. We know the vandalism, the destruction that has occurred. We know, we will know what occurs going forward. We can extrapolate based off of this new ordinance, how many enforcement interactions we have, how much of a decrease there is hopefully in the vandalism. I think it's pretty clear to see that there's going to be some data to be had in six or 12 months to see how effective this is.
Thank you.
Councillor Hanson?
Oh, I'm just very quick to add that parks does also keep track of incidents of vandalism, so that would be easy for us. I wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't know who you're talking to, or when, or how that comes out, but we would be able to track a reduce, reduction in vandalism in parks specifically.
Thank you.
Councillor Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Leslie. Ty, I have one quick question. I know you're not legal, but could you explain for us how this camping ordinance doesn't affect the, that park closure ordinance doesn't affect the camping ordinance?
I believe I can answer that question, but I will keep my eye on Doug to see if he nods, but essentially, the, the camping ordinance, if it were to be adopted, would supersede the parks hours ordinance. So in a situation where there was no availability within a shelter, or in the night lawn, or anywhere else that was, and camping would have to occur in parks, those parks hours ordinance would no longer apply.
Thank you.
If there are no additional questions, the floor is open for a motion. Councillor Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to approve first reading of ordinance 3226 and send it to second reading.
Second.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you. Yeah, I applaud APRC and the commissioners and interim director Eldridge for bringing this forward. I, too, visit the parks a lot and find the vandalism increase disturbing, and, and it's a drain on the city. And I hope that this ordinance is a step in the right direction and still lets Ashlanders move through the parks after dark, and to utilize them the way that they normally would, and still give an extra tool to APR, Ashland Police Department, to limit this vandalism and hopefully lessen the burden on us taxpayers.
Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely second what Councillor Hanson said. It is yet another tool. And to your point, Leslie, thank you for making that distinction, that this does not really have anything to do with the camping ordinance. It's just regulating behavior relative to vandalism and, and solving for, or hoping to solve for that. So as a recommendation, I would, I would hope that down the road in a few months with either a parks report or something that where the commission would take it up and just, and just measure it and be able to say that this is working. So, thank you.
Councillor Hyatt?
I just wanted an opportunity to thank you, Leslie, for taking my concern about the skate park and those facilities that may not be lit for various hours, and working with the team. I appreciate the dialogue we had and the information here tonight. So for that, I just wanted to express my gratitude.
Rule call, please, Alyssa?
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Okay, we move on now to the second reading of ordinance 3227, an ordinance allowing alcohol use in parks. Okay, I'll just stay right up here. All right, well, I'll just start out here with, again, the brief timeline. The structure of this presentation will be shockingly familiar. October 11th, 2023, APRC commissioners unanimously approved the APRC internal policy and recommended ordinance language go to council. On November 21st, council approved the ordinance with amendments, and APRC was asked to consider two items at, at that meeting, and those items dealt with ensuring proper security, particularly when looking at hiring private security firms, and considering preferred locations for, for, for larger, specific events. So based on that feedback, there were some modifications and changes made to the internal APRC alcohol use in parks policy, which is in your packet, included in your packet. I believe I have even read the added language that is changed from the original, and parks commissioners were unanimously approved that modified policy language. So the ordinance language has not changed from when it was seen in November, but the, the policy itself has. And the primary reason for that is to allow, retain a broad, broad ordinance language for adaptability into the future, but to shape that policy as we develop and grow the, the program. Councillor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, kind of like what Councillor Hyatt said earlier, I really appreciate you taking that back. I, I want to be clear, I fully understand that policy regarding parks is not our purview, but it certainly, taking that back, it makes me really a lot more comfortable voting this through. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
The commissioners, and for that matter, myself, thought that the comments were, were on point and quite relevant, and so there was really, it was a collaborative effort. There was not, no issue adding that language and increasing the specificity, and I do think it's a better policy as a result of that collaboration.
Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, thank you again, and almost kind of the same question, which is, this is, just to start, this is a pretty significant paradigm shift from what we've traditionally used for. That said, it is, that this community is used to relative to our parks. That said, it's an interesting and innovative topic to consider relative to economic development, to other things. That said, it will change a few things. Did, did the, did you or the commission discuss any kind of metrics and outreach and feedback mechanism for, for parks users in the community, for business community, for other city departments such as APD, just to be able to, again, measure and just make sure that it's working as intended?
Well, we are in the very, very beginning stages of this, and based on the wait for OLCC permits and the, what it will, will take to really get to the place where we have even more than one or two events, I think realistically, we're talking about a very limited data set to, to start out with. That said, we, we have, we already have in existence a interdepartmental special events team that works together and that would be involved in putting together any sort of event that was occurring in parks. So that would, that structure is already in place. And then adding the alcohol use permit would, would add that, that new layer. I would imagine that to start, we would basically have the equivalent of a debrief before, in the middle, and after an event, to really talk about what worked, what didn't, how, how these things went on. You know, our, our first intent is really to work with a known partner, which would be the Rogue World Music Festival, which has been operating very successful events, artistic, cultural, community events within the, within the park. And again, if you recall from the last meeting, it would be this very controlled beer garden, no hard alcohol type of situation. So I think it would be difficult to have any sort of metrics when, with the data set being so small, but the process of, of having these meetings and discussing step by step and doing qualitative analyses of, of how each event goes, and planning and evolving through those times as we, as it, and then, and then working towards the possibility of actual meaningful data. I think we'd have to get to a certain point in the program to get there.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Councillor Duquesne?
Thank you. Hi, Leslie. I had a question because I, I like when you said limited, and my question being is that because Lithia Park is Lithia Park, and a lot of our tourists go there, and just a lot of our residents go there, and especially, I'm thinking about the Japanese Garden. I thought about smoking. Have we considered smoking? Smoking's not allowed. I, and I, I was thinking that, I, I look at this, I think it's good, I'm all for it. I think that, and I appreciate the security, but we don't have hours of operation, we don't have smoking, and I don't want it to be inundated with events and the residents and just a tourist on a beautiful spring day couldn't enjoy it. So do you know how many events that might take place within a six-month time, or is it going to be limited? And what are we going to do about the hours of operation and cigarette smoking?
Are you asking me specifically about Ashland Japanese Garden, or, or just Lithia in general?
I'm, I'm thinking about Lithia, and I'm thinking about the Garden, so let's go with the Garden.
Okay. So for the Ashland Japanese Garden, we have a management advisory committee that has actually, even for the last year, been putting together recommendations and plans for potential cultural events, community events, public education events, as well as, in the future, looking at private fundraisers and potentially private rental of the facility. Those, use of the Japanese Garden, I mean, there's no, there's no smoking in any of our parks, period. And that would, you know, be very clearly emphasized within any agreement to, to, or events that would happen within the park. Any public event would have park staff present, and that would, in general, I've found that people are incredibly respectful of, of this prohibition, but in a, in any sort of a public or community event, there would be park staff, park staff present. Docents may even be at, at the Japanese Garden, as they are almost, almost all the time during opening hours. And for private fundraising events, I think we would just have that expectation and that prohibition very, very clearly defined with the, you know, the potential of no longer having that group be able to work with parks, if that was something that was to occur.
Part two of follow-up. I did scroll down, and I did read the applications very similar to what happens at the band show for Southern Oregon Pride, and I just thought maybe for the Japanese Garden, it might be critiqued a little bit. I'm glad to hear that there's a Japanese Garden team, so that they can go ahead and critique it per event. So I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I need you to dust off your crystal ball and let us know. If you're an event organizer planning spring events, which you are, if you're an event organizer planning, planning spring events, you're doing it right now, you're going to apply in January, do you think that this is going to be open applications ready if this process moves, moves forward, second reading, adoption? So in other words, could people start applying now, even though we're not through the process? When are, when are these opportunities going to become available? I'm hoping that we can get something readily available for organizers for spring 24.
So groups like the Rogue World Music Festival are already well-established in our system and probably have already put in their special permits and are, and planning well in advance. So the OLCC permit and the alcohol, supplementary alcohol use permit are, are kind of an addition. They're supplementary part to that process. So absolutely, any group could start right now, go and applying for a special event permit and working with the special event team to, to make that happen. And then we would work to add on that supplementary alcohol use permit. They would need to, and I would recommend that they go into the OLCC process as quickly as possible, since there is a big time lag to get that. So that will probably be one of the biggest obstacles. And my wonderful deputy director has appeared. She must have a comment.
I was just going to comment. Hi, I'm Rachel. I'm the deputy director for Parks and Recreation, and we are...
Rachel, if you can get in really close to that mic, we really, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, here you are. So we're implementing a new software program for registration and facility reservations for Parks and Recreation, and that's actually being implemented now. And so starting January 2nd and January 3rd, we'll have forms online for people to, to book online. But honestly, I would encourage people that are interested in having events to, to reach out to us now, because we can facilitate that, you know, just talking to people over the phone and in person, and we're working through any issues or concerns, so.
Great, thank you. So what I'm hearing is, even though this isn't through the process, people should approach APRC now for their spring events?
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you. Great work.
The floor is open for a motion. Councillor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the second reading of ordinance 3227.
Second. I think Councillor Duquesne?
Okay, yeah.
Councillor Bloom?
Just gratitude and look forward to seeing more events in the park. That'll be nice, and people having fun, hopefully not too much fun.
Councillor Duquesne?
I, no, I support. I, no, I support.
Any other discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dukane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the second reading of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Parking Code Ordinance Number 3229. On December 5th, 2023, the City Council held a public hearing on Planning Action PAT3 2023-00006, involving amendments to the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to Remove Automobile Parking Mandates and to Amend Parking Standards in Order to Implement Requirements of the State of Oregon's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules. Following this public hearing, the City Council approved the first reading of ordinance 3229, amending Ashland's parking standards and removing parking mandates. No modifications to ordinance 3229 were requested by council at first reading, so tonight the City Council considers approval at second reading by title only. Two separate motions on this action are requested, one to approve the second reading of the ordinance, and another to approve the findings of fact presented by the Planning Commission for council's consideration. And with that, I will hand it over to Brandon Goldman from our Community Development Department.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I don't have much to add to what the mayor has put forth. On December 5th, the council had considerable discussion on the item to remove parking mandates citywide in compliance with the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities state legislature push to reduce greenhouse gases. Ashland would not be the first city to implement this, I think five have already done so around the state at this point. Additionally, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved findings articulating how the proposed ordinance complies with the statewide planning goals, and that is presented in your packet as it was presented initially on December 5th. The Planning Commission has approved those findings and recommends council approve them as well. And with that, the adoption at second reading, there would be no longer any parking requirements citywide, and that would, I would typically say an ordinance would go into effect 30 days after second reading. However, because this was implemented as a statewide requirement, it was actually imposed on the city on January 1st of this year, and parking has not been required at, to this time. What this does do is it aligns our local code requirement with those statewide prohibitions on mandating parking within proximity of transit, but it does expand it to include areas that are further than a half mile to transit to apply that parking onsite doesn't, isn't required in developments in those areas that are outside that buffer through the state law. But with that, if there's any questions at second reading, I'm happy to answer those.
Counsel Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Brandon. I have one question, and I believe you addressed it last time, but I would like you to address it again. Are there any opportunities for empty parking lots to develop with the change in this ordinance code?
Yes. Any existing parking that was put in as a requirement of a prior planning approval is no longer required, and as such, were a property owner to come back to the city with a new application to develop that property that was previously provided as parking, they could do so. That's one of the intents of the ordinance is to increase opportunities for additional economic development and residential development within areas that are already built out.
Thank you for underlining that. I hope that's heard throughout the business community. Thank you.
Counsel Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, just a quick question that occurs to me, and I know this came up recently, and it's, it may be coincidental, this, but is there, you may have said this and I have forgotten, is there a maximum on-street parking limitation?
There is not a maximum on-street parking limitation, other than the, how many you could physically fit. So a car 22-foot long for a parking space, you could have one parking space per 22 feet of frontage for parallel parking, and then through the development of a public street, that's typically how the number of parking spaces are allocated. If there was an alternative arrangement for perpendicular or diagonal parking, those numbers could be increased, but there's no maximum in the land use code, because the on-street parking is actually provided by the city when streets are built.
Perfect. Thank you, Brandon.
Counsel Bloom, a question?
No.
Okay. All right, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Bloom?
I feel like Counselor Hanson had to read through all of those last time, so I'll take this one for you.
Buckle up.
I move approval of the second reading of ordinance 3229, which is titled, "An Ordinance Amending the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to Remove Automobile Parking Mandates and Amend Parking Standards Set forth in Ashland Municipal Code Sections 18.2.2, 18.2.3, 18.3.14, 18.3.2, 18.3.4, 18.3.5, 18.3.9, 18.4.2, 18.4.3, 18.4.4, 18.4.6, 18.5.2, 18.5.3, 18.5.4, 18.5.5, and 18.5.6."
Is there a second? Counsel Hyatt. Counsel Bloom?
I have nothing to say after that.
Counsel Hyatt?
Just to get my gratitude to the team and to the Planning Commission for their extensive work on this.
Yes. And I would just like to add that these are the kinds of decisions that we have to make to prepare our community for the world that is coming, and I appreciate the State of Oregon's leadership in this, and also our planning department and our Planning Commission's efforts to align us with that legislation. Any other comments or discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Hanson?
Yes.
Dukane?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
And the floor is open for a motion for approval of findings of fact. Counsel Kaplan?
I'll take my turn. The attached findings document was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. I have moved to approve the findings of fact and conclusions of law document dated November 28, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yes.
Counsel Dale?
Same.
Discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Dukane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. And we move on now to second reading of the Prohibited Camping Ordinance Number 3228. Now we'll hand it over to Doug to queue us up.
Great, thank you very much. Oh, here we are. Thank you. We are here with the changes to the last, to the ordinance that you had asked for, the changes that you had asked for, for the last time we came here with the first read, and there's really only two sections that are of difference from what was, what was previously provided to you. We'll go over those, and then once, once I explain, once we explain those, then we will read those out loud in full, the changes that were actually made, and then, then the rest of the ordinance is prepared and ready for, for your vote on a second read, if that's what you want to do. The, the, the change is on page three of your ordinance, in the definition of occupy or occupancy, and there, what we did was removed, we did two things. We removed a, the word person out of there, so occupy or occupancy means to maintain physical control over a public-owned area by a person or a person's private property. And instead, we just said to have physical control over publicly-owned area by a person's private property, and we'll explain that here in a second. And then the second part of that is in the second sentence of that, which is, says, "The occupancy shall not include recreational park use," and that was the subject. So here, what we've done, and, and part of that was in conversations with you and also with law enforcement, since having talked with you, is, is that they weren't so much concerned about trying to deal with persons themselves sitting on benches and those type of things, it's really the property, or the property being left on areas and public areas in which they essentially are taking exclusive use. So this would resolve some of those issues with respect to you being out there in a park or in an area where you would want to have a birthday party, you'd be there for a couple hours. Most people don't leave their, their property there for a couple hours, they're normally there and enjoying themselves. So we didn't really want to prevent people from using the park if they're there for several hours. It's mostly if they just become established with their property, that is, they've just kind of, through experience and through the kind of empirical evidence, shows that people just taking up space with their property and then utilizing that space as their own space is what is, is the, is the problem that is trying to be prevented. So in this case, we talk about occupy or occupancy, and that would, we felt that that was addressing the concerns of the council, at the same time, addressing those issues such as recreational use of the park, and, or using the park areas. The second-
Doug, before you move on, we have a question?
Yeah.
Counsel Kaplan?
Better do it.
Let's do it one by one. So any questions about this change will happen now. Counsel Kaplan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm curious about this prohibition. So the, one of the important aspects of this ordinance is, in compliance with the Ninth Circuit, is that we must have a designated space or shelter. As you all explained to us last time, we currently do have a designated space, which is a dusk-to-dawn lawn right there. But part of the provisions of that dusk, that's why we're in compliance and able to prohibit camping establishment, putting up of tents in other places, in other parks, public lands, as a result. One of the provisions of that dusk-to-dawn lawn, though, is that people must remove their possessions at dawn or shortly thereafter, which I understand is an important legal requirement. They currently move that out to the public right of way in front of the, you know, in front of the, by the street here. So how does this provision square with that requirement that they, that people remove possessions from a place in order to take advantage of a designated space that we provide?
I think the practical effect is that it has a little bit more control over property management, that this section is subject to the same property requirements in the definition of apparent value and utility, and so it would fall under that.
So I'm, I'm not sure I understand. I'm sorry. So are they allowed to put possessions in, by the curb there, or are they not allowed to?
I've just called Chief O'Meara up, I think he might be able to help us.
Thanks.
Are you done?
Yeah.
All right. Yes, the tents being up there during the day is a violation of our current prohibited camping ordinance, and it would be a violation of this. There is no great clean answer for that. One of the things that I'm going to lean on, and I know that this is not a definitive answer, but it is an answer, is that police officers see people breaking the law every day, and don't do anything about it. If you're going two miles over the speed limit, you're breaking the law, but we generally don't do anything about it. Even if we have enforcement contact, more than 50% of the time, we don't take enforcement action. And so, yes, this is a violation currently, and it would be a violation of the proposed ordinance, and just some measure of our collective recognition through the police department that these folks have to go somewhere during the day, and so we can just kind of roll with that, as long as it doesn't bring additional problems. That's just the reality that we have, and there is no great answer for that. The only answer would be, and I, not for a million years, Counsel Kaplan, I'm suggesting that you're suggesting this, is for us to be super, you know, rigorous and very adherent to the absolute letter of the law. Can we kick them out of there? Sure, we can, but, you know, if we kick them out of there, they're going to go across the street to Garfield Park or go somewhere else, and so this is probably the least bad situation.
Counsel Kaplan?
So, I appreciate that, Chief. One of my concerns with this whole ordinance is that it talks about things that are prohibited, rather than telling where people can do things. We have designated a space here for people to, to put their tents up when they have no other place to go, in order to rest or to sleep. We were not, we've only told them in this case that they can't put their possessions in these places, and, and I think, I, of course, accept your, your explanation that the police, you know, recognize that's an impossible situation, but it still puts people in a vulnerable, it still may, to feel to some, that they're being put in a vulnerable, vulnerable position, and that they're subject to some arbitrary decisions. So wouldn't it be better for us to designate an actual space for those possessions to go during the day? So in this way, take all ambiguity out of it. I'm not, because I am not suggesting that you rigorously enforce this, it doesn't make any sense to rigorously enforce it. This is part of the problem.
Yeah, Counsel, I would put that back on, on the council, that's a policy decision. From my point of view as a law enforcement officer, we are following the Ninth Circuit Court rulings, we're giving them a place where they can get physiologically necessary sleep, and therefore we can prohibit them from being in other parts of the city, and as unpleasant as it looks, it actually generally works.
Mayor, thank you. Counsel Dukane?
If I may too, there's, there's really, I, I thought about your question about trying to find the positive, flipping the switch, and you can say people can, can, using the speeding analogy, you can say people can speed up to 65 miles per hour, you're just prohibited from going over 65. There really isn't a way to prevent camping unless it's a prohibition. And what you're trying to do is you're not, you're, you're, the, the ordinance is not there designed to encourage people to camp. It's, it's there, the ordinance is there to prohibit the behavior of camping that, that, where you have alternatives, and you aren't choosing those alternatives, but instead you're having a behavior that is not socially acceptable, in terms of what is camping anywhere you want, on any place in the entire city, or trying to encourage. You could, you could have different areas throughout the entire city, and where you could say, these are areas that you want designated. Does, this ordinance doesn't stop you from doing that. We don't, we're not necessarily stopped at just using the dusk-to-dawn, it's just that this is the only space that we have to do. If you wanted to use one of the parks for it, you could do that. And that's one of the reasons you have that city manager has discretion, the time, place, and manner. If in fact, you're overrun and you need a place to do, and you have something that, that we don't have designated right at the very moment, the city manager can designate a place, whether it's on the golf course, or whether it's on the, you know, some other place, that, that's appropriate for people to stay. It's just, otherwise, it's not appropriate for people to stay under viaducts, it's not appropriate for people to stay next to the streets where it's dangerous, it's not appropriate for people to be camping in places in which it's dangerous. And so that's, that's the purpose, and so it is a prohibition, and there isn't any other way of, I mean, I know it sounds bad, but there's really no other nice way of saying that you're not allowed to camp in places you're not allowed to camp.
I'm not talking about camping, so you're conflating the discussion, I'm sorry.
Well, this is a camping ordinance.
This is an occup, this is, we're talking about the provision that uses that, which is occupancy, to maintain, maintain physical control over a publicly-owned area. I didn't use the word camp, only, except for in connection with the dusk-to-dawn lawn, where people are enjoying, are expected to camp, if they don't have another place to go. The point is that they need to put their, their possession in someplace during, during the day, and we haven't given them a place, except for with the forbearance of the police, which I, which I appreciate.
Well, the campsite-
I'm not talking about the campsite.
No, no, but the definition, the campsite definition has occupancy in the word.
Doug, I think we just need to take this back up- Doug, I think we just need to take this back up a level and make sure that we're talking about the same thing. So you were talking specifically about where people put their items during the day. And Doug, if I heard you correctly, the city manager can designate a space for people to put their items during the day.
Yeah.
So this, this ordinance does not prohibit the city manager from designating a space, potentially even the space where people are right now using in front of the civic center here. Nothing in this ordinance prohibits the city manager from, from designating that and taking it out of an arbitrary decision by the police about whether or not to enforce.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Does that help? Counselor Kaplan?
Thank you. That's a really succinct response to my question.
Okay, great. Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. Something that I just wanted to kind of piggyback on is that the city manager has the ability to say where. I've seen in, in the past that the lawn area, there's been certain days whereas the tents have not moved and they've been there. And something that I hear from our community a lot is stability, wanting stability. And so is there an opportunity where the people who live on the lawn would be able to remain, leave their tents there during the day? I've seen this happen before, and, and so many times we hear stability. So occupying that area and the ability to leave their tents there.
So before we move into the answering of that, I just want to make sure that the council remembers that the business at hand is the ordinance. So if we can keep our questions focused more specifically on the ordinance, but feel free to answer that if we can do it quickly.
The city management gave the PD the discretion to tell people they could stay there if it was thought to be raining all day, and I leave that up to the discretion of the on-duty supervisor in the morning.
Thank you. Let me have supervisor. Okay. Were there additional questions?
You took the words out of my mouth.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Counselor Hanson?
I have, I have a question about place, but I, I think I'm, I think I'm going to wait for the presentation to go a little bit further here.
Okay. So we are, we've handled the first correction or the first adjustment to the ordinance. So we'll go ahead and-
That's the definition.
Yep, we'll take on the second one now.
And then the second section is Section 10.46.030. It's prohibited occupancy. There it says that, subject to the 1046.020, which is, is your exceptions to camping. No person shall occupy street, furniture, or public area according to the occupancy definition in 10.46.010H, which is what I just gave you. Property owned by violators shall be subject to the removal process in 1046.040. We removed the, no persons shall sleep on public benches between hours 9:00 AM and 8:00 AM. And-
Any questions for that, around that section? Then it was just-
Was that a change from the previous reading?
It just, it just made the, it made the, the definition of occupancy make sense with the enforcement part of it, but there wasn't really all the substantive part of occupancy is in the definition.
Right.
Great.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And then there, back up one more on page three again, C, and it's little double I. It says, so here we're talking about regardless of the exceptions in subsection B above, camping is prohibited under any circumstances in which the act of camping includes existence of fire, gas stove, or when the campsite exceeds 100 square feet or located on, attached to, or within, and double I, Lithia Park and parks with child or youth recreation equipment. So there we added the child or youth recreation as opposed to just saying, what would we have, Lithia Park?
Playground.
And playground, yeah. It was kind of unclear as to what a playground is, and not all of them have playgrounds, but there is youth equipment for different kinds of things. And so those were the ones in which we talked with parks about, and they said that would, you know, that would work best. And there, again, the idea being that there are, in all these different sections, there is a protected interest in there. There is a, there's either sidewalks and bike paths and walkways shouldn't be blocked because of emergencies and other types of things. These other areas are also like youth sensitive or those type of things, or in the case of the stream, they're, they're environmentally sensitive, so you don't want camping within a certain period. So that's the basis and, and the support that you would otherwise have in supporting your ordinance.
Okay. I have a question. Go ahead, Counselor Kaplan.
Oh, you have a question.
I do, but you can go first.
Thank you. I have a question. You previously mentioned the golf course, so it's my question about-
I didn't, I mean, I didn't mean to suggest it.
No, well, regardless, is the golf course included as a place with youth or children's recreational equipment?
Yeah, I would say yes, as you mentioned.
And so the map at the, at the end, I don't think has been updated, because it still includes the golf course as a location that could, that is not prohibited by the terms of the, of the ordinance when there's no designated space or shelter. But are there other places that are impacted by that? I think there was mention of Triangle Park because there's a slack line equipment.
Yes.
Is there any other place that then is impacted by this?
Well, I mean, I don't have in-depth knowledge of every single park in Ashland, so I probably, I don't know if Legal's the right department to answer that in some ways. I mean, the reality is that it'll, and also the reality is that parks change, the nature of parks change over time too. And so it's meant to have some flexibility in it on purpose. So that'll be a factual determination. The law enforcement officer will have to, in their report, describe facts fitting recreational youth equipment.
There certainly are other parks that have recreational equipment, like Clay Street Park. Triangle Park is the motivation behind that change, but there are other parks that have recreational equipment for sure.
That weren't included in the map before.
I don't know about the map. I'm just saying that, of course, there are other parks that have recreational equipment. I'm not referencing the map when I say that.
And they certainly could change over time as recreational equipment is added.
And same with childcare. I think the map is, was a guideline. It could be used as an informational tool, but same with childcare, those change too with time. So that's not, the map is not set in stone.
Yeah, I know. I get it. That's the problem.
And I'll just follow up on that. It seems to me that the map is a policy question. It's a, it's an internal determination of which parks land on which side of this in the instance where there isn't a designated space for someone to go. And it would seem that we could, if this, if this ordinance passes on second reading, one of the things that the city could do for both our law enforcement and for the people who would be subject to these requirements is to actually create a, a positive map of where is it you actually can go, so that, so that we don't have to tell people they can't be in the median strips, or, oh, you picked another place, but, oh, we think that's dangerous. So there, it is possible. There's nothing in this ordinance that says that we can't flip that script and actually create one so that the law enforcement isn't wondering if there's recreational, if this counts as recreational equipment or something like that. We could, we, and that would be an internal process between Parks and Recreation and the city manager's office, right?
Well, yes, and forgive me, but I was kind of assuming that that's what Ms. Hyatt's other motion was referencing, is after six months, there may be some, you know, massaging or other things that you may be considering that would be of, you know, that would help with defining what we're talking about here.
Right, and so that's the possibility.
Yeah, this, this ordinance can be changed, or resolutions, or the city manager can make, you know, in cases, can make certain changes as well.
Right. So, but in terms of actually deciding which parks fall into this and how to apply that piece around recreational equipment, that is something that could be decided internally so that everybody's clear on what, what is meant by that and what parks fall in and out. So I have, the question that I had was actually specific to one of the elements here, and where it says 250 feet of a preschool, kindergarten, elementary, and secondary school. We have had people reach out with concerns about Willow Wind, which I understand is on county land. It's, it's, it's outside of the city limits. And so would this, would this ordinance still draw those lines and the 250 feet off of properties that are not inside the city limits if that 250 feet hits the city limits?
Okay, so I think I understand your question. So the, I, there's two, there's two parts to that question. First, if you have property that's outside of the city, that's not owned by the city, our rules don't apply to them.
I know that.
So if you have a city property that is outside the city limits, our ordinances apply to that, to that city property.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The, another functional piece is that within 250 feet of Willow Wind, I strongly believe is all private property, and a public space camping prohibition wouldn't have anything to do with that. That would just be criminal trespassing.
But if we had an instance where there was one of these facilities that's identified here that sits outside of the city limits, and that 250 feet has some sort of public space inside our city limits, this ordinance would apply to that, that-
If it's owned by, if it's property owned by the city.
If it's public property, yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is very helpful, because I think at this point, my question for Legal is, couldn't we go back to Housing and Human Services and the houseless community and get input on a positive map and insert this into the ordinance before we go to second reading so we could somehow internally stress test this a little bit better so we would have a better idea of what it might look like if we get a challenge, we go back to the courts, and then we don't have to, you know, have, you know, contentious on-the-street type of judgments of what is dangerous camping, what is allowable camping. I think we might actually find within the houseless community that we find more opportunity for, for, for folks to, to survive in our city and not be hassled, rather than to go the other direction, which is, you know, to try to-
Counselor Hanson, your question?
Work this out on the streets. Yes, couldn't we, couldn't we deal with this right now before we go back to second reading to somehow get ahead of this?
Well, you, you have 30 days before this ordinance even takes effect, one, so you could have a map done in that period of time. Yes, you could, you could postpone the second reading again and for, you know, that's what the council wishes to do. And I think that answered the question, but I-
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
So I guess I have a follow-up question to that. When we're looking at the difference between ordinance and, and policy, and what is easier to change than other things, including a specific static map in an ordinance, is that something that we would typically do for something like this, or is it more typical that we would put the, the requirements in the ordinance and then have an adaptable? Because I just wonder, if the city manager then designates a space, do we have to come back to this council to change that map because it's embedded in an ordinance?
So the map is not, is not part of the ordinance. The map was informative, I think off of the November 6 questions from, from Mr. Kaplan. So, so the map was informative, but not part of the ordinance. Unlike, you know, for example, EYLEA is an example where it's very specific that the map is part of the ordinance for that enforcement.
Okay. Counselor Dale?
So let me, thank you, Mayor. So let me see if I can really quick this, rephrase this in a form of a quick question just to, just to clarify. The way the ordinance is written now is there are specific places within the ordinance that are, that the answer is no. That is indicated on the map of November 6, and it will change as the places that are designated change, but those answers are no. Everything else on the map, while, while I understand the need to get a yes, the answer really in practical, practicality is maybe. I mean, it's an uncomfortable place to be in, but that's how ordinances are written. So the way that I'm interpreting this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that while every place that's not a no is a maybe, it's really incumbent upon the city to determine a positive time, place, and manner. So we leave that open to the city manager, to policy, through the housing committee to be able to, to work towards those yes. We're not going to get a yes in an ordinance. We're going to get a maybe, but we, with the intent of having proactive policy that works towards a yes, that something works, and we communicate that effectively. Is that fair a statement?
Yeah, I almost would say, to piggyback off of your statement, I would almost say that the maybes are actually a yes with the time, place, and manner of the city management.
Correct. That's another way to say yes.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions on this section? Any other corrections or updates to the ordinance from last time?
Only instructions. So when you, when you pass this ordinance, you'll need to read H out loud. So if you do your motion, you say, I'm going to make a change to the ordinance in this respect, H, and you would read what, what is written there. You would go to C. I'm afraid to say that you'll have to read the entirety of C. So regardless of the exception, subsection B above, you go down, and then you'd read all the way through Lithia Park and I, you know, all, all the way down to none. Shouldn't take too long, but I'm just saying that's, that's what needs to be read. And then finally, you would say, and then finally, my last amendment would be to Section 10.46.003, prohibited occupancy, and then you'd read that one section, A, all the way to its entirety, stopping at, at 10.46.040, the last word on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Otherwise, everything else is, is the same as it was when we presented to you in first reading.
Great, thank you. We will now go ahead and open up the public hearing section of this. We have a number of folks who have signed up to speak. So you will, you will come, you will come up to the microphones, and we have set up this other podium, this, this taller one. If you feel you'd like to speak from there, you certainly can. I believe we have four people who have signed up to speak. And the first one will be Tam Masden, and then Heron Boyce, and then Debbie Nicewander and Trina Sanford. Each person will receive three minutes, so please tell me, tell us your name and the city in which you live. And then again, Alyssa will give you a single chime when you have 20 seconds left and a double chime when your time is complete.
Thank you. My name is Tam. I live in Ashland. I'm here because I care about kindness and humanity. I'd sit here and say words about trying to influence you to vote otherwise with the new camping ordinance, but I'm already aware that you guys are fast in motion towards your own end goals. You allow community to come sit in this room and use our voice for X amount of minutes, maybe to make it seem like our opinions and thoughts matter. Maybe a long, long time ago, there was just planet Earth with its first few guests. It could have been animals hanging out, and then humans showed up. Maybe we shared everything with each other at first because there was no law or idea about why some group of people shouldn't have access to something. I imagine we were kind and present and often checking in with our tribe members, caring deeply for each other, cultivating our natural state and feelings of belonging, feeling included, a part of, and worthy to exist. We evolved more and more as a human species, and new inventions happened, supporting life, feeling a bit more cozy down here. Government and greed eventually showed up around on the planet, and we as a people, for the most part, went with it. Laws and rules were made, and separation of the peoples everywhere became more evident and introducing new ideas in people's minds about feeling scared about his or her neighbor. Media started to pump out scary story after scary story, enrolling people in more- Media started to pump out scary story after scary story, enrolling people in more fear and therefore further control. And specifically, our unhoused brothers and sisters everywhere across the planet got more and more pushed aside because of the stories shuffling around with community members. Many of the same stories are being told today, and some. Why do you have to exist sleeping outside? Homeless people are gross and smell bad. You people need to get a job and take care of yourself with your able body. I have earned my own resources, so go get your own. All unhoused people are drug addicts. What a burden having to deal with mental breakdowns from people on the street. We are not responsible for unhoused people here in Ashland. Maybe some of these words sound familiar bouncing around in your own judgmental heads or others that you know. I'm aware that what I'm saying is extreme in these points that I'm making, that all of you may not actually agree. Your hearts may honestly be in a different place. Shutting down Pioneer Hall, I'm just going to finish. Shutting down Pioneer Hall, knowing that home feeling, it has connected a lot of people here in town to over the years, is not nice. Making it extremely difficult to access and blaming the building's condition is BS.
Ma'am. I have, excuse me, no, ma'am. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. It is not about Pioneer Hall, and your time is complete.
Sure. Our voices will get louder. Thank you.
Thank you. Heron Boyce?
Because I don't always have the ability to be succinct, I thought I would cover some of my concerns with musical references over an 80-year playlist. Phil Collins, "I Don't Care Anymore," Billy Joel, "Down East River, Alexa," and "No Man's Land," David Rovix, "Occupation," "The Commons," "We Just Want The World," "Here At The End Of The World," "Resistance," "Hang A Flag In The Window," "Grent Control," "Standing Rock," "Don't Pay The Rent," "There Used To Be A City In This Town," "Strike A Blow Against Empire," and "Make Planet Earth Great Again." Woody Guthrie, "Hard Travelin'," Dust Bowl Ballard, "I Ain't Got No Home," Hobo's Lullaby, "Which Side Are You On?" Pete Seeger, "Banks Of Marble," "Solidarity Forever," Pearl Jam, "Guarantee," "Society," "Here's To The State." Bob Dylan, "Hard Rain's Gonna Fall," Rage Against The Machine, Ghost Of Tom Joad. Shocking as it was to find the city council risking further lawsuits by lowering the acceptable cold weather shelter temperature to 24 degrees when there are already so many elderly and unhoused suffering hypothermia at temperatures in the 40s, it was startlingly obvious, startlingly obvious, why these human beings are overlooked. To save money, a more sustainable method of saving money would be to cut the wages of the city council due to a dirt-devoted budget.
Mr. Boyce.
This is obviously a public service position. What I'm saying is remove funds from a bias and corrupting society.
This meeting right now, this hearing, is about this particular ordinance. I need you to keep your, we need you to keep your comments specifically to the camping ordinance, if you would.
It is a grievous human rights violation and includes issues such as, but not limited to, creating a focus on or putting aside finances for a winter shelter when these winter shelter will be ending in early January, thrusting people from 80-degree rooms into 30-degree streets ensuing hardship.
Mr. Boyce, this hearing is about the camping ordinance. Do you have comments for us regarding the camping ordinance? You can come back up again.
These are all in a related.
When we're talking about the other issues a little bit later, you can certainly come up as many times as you need to. Do you have comments specific to the camping ordinance?
In addition, in relation to what is acceptable for people to camp in regarding space within the city, there is a lack of true comfortable space and position. What is considered an area where someone can and will gain sustainable sleep is not provided, including but not limited to the lawns or the current shelters. And there is a considerable lack of concern for the overall and general well-being of the people outside of moving them to very intentionally overlooked and moderated spaces.
Thank you. Debbie Nicewander, and then Trina Sanford.
Hello. My name's Debbie Nicewander, and I'm here to let you know how I feel about this ordinance, and I'm still against it. I thought the neighborhood, I thought we were addressing bad behavior and crime, and then we come up with this homeless ordinance where a lot of this isn't even criminal. And we already have ordinances and laws for littering, offensive littering, vandalism, disorderly conduct, trespass, all the things that, they're already in place, but here we are targeting specifically the homeless population. And that's wrong. And I agree, we need more police presence on the south side of town. I agree. I believe we should be regulating bad behavior and not someone's status. And that's what this ordinance is doing. We're also mimicking Medford, and I think that's nonsense as well. We don't have the resources that Medford has. They have outreach. We have none. They have the crisis intervention. We haven't utilized that yet. They have a livability team. They have, Rogue Retreat has many different shelters. We have none of that. We are not prepared to take it to where we're going. Another concern I have about occupancy is Paula had brought up, does this mean everybody with the two-hour thing? And then you come up with, it shall not apply to recreational park use. So that brings it back to it only deals with the homeless and not everybody else because they go there for recreation. So I have a concern with that. And the night lawn folks, okay? We have that designated space, and I too am concerned about that 250 feet from a designated space. We have no day center. We have no storage. We never got storage. These folks have nowhere to go and nowhere to put their belongings, and they are getting cited for not being off that lawn when a police officer or the supervisor on duty requires them to be off. So once again, really think about this. Think hard. It doesn't have to be now. We could put other things in place and pursue it later, but, thank you, timing's off.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more thing.
No.
One more thing. This is a thank you.
Okay.
This is positive. On the night lawn, we now have security camera.
Miss Nicewander, I need you to come up later if you want to talk about that piece.
Okay.
This is a public hearing for this specific ordinance. Thank you.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, here I go again. Trina Sanford, Ashland. I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach here. So there's an author, Kim John Payne, and he's widely known in the world of Waldorf education, who speaks about three different phases of parenting: the governing phase, the gardening phase, and the guiding phase. And I learned about Kim during a time in which my husband and I had our kids enrolled at the SISU school. And although our kids are sadly long gone from that school, we still sometimes joke that when one of our kids does something out of step, we realize it's time to maybe reel them back into the gardening phase in order to regroup. So what is the gardening phase? It's a stage in which we step back to carefully listen and observe what's going on, then plan accordingly on a new path that takes the whole family's needs into account. In accordance with the current camping ordinance, I feel what we've been witnessing is an attempt to step back into this gardening phase, to regroup and reorganize the current ordinance so that it meets the needs of all the members of this community. And it's no shock, really, that those who don't want to reevaluate this ordinance are the very ones who want to keep trying to get away with the behavior that is both disrespectful and unruly, a reaction I've seen in our kids when we too had to pull them back. But here's the thing. The current ordinance was drafted, I believe, in 2008 or 2012, and since that time, the situation in our community has certainly changed. It's naive and reckless to continue to expect that an ordinance drafted back then could in any way meet the needs and challenges of today. Instead, it's both healthy and wise to come back to the table, as we have, in order to draft an updated ordinance that addresses the gaps in the current system that we are all experiencing challenges with today. So let's not backpedal. An updated ordinance must be drafted and approved. Still, no doubt, years from now, we may come back to this table yet again to reevaluate even this ordinance to address changes that life will undoubtedly throw our way so that it too can be reconstructed to meet whatever those challenges may be as well. It's the ebb and flow of life that will forever be changing, and we need to be willing to change with it. The current ordinance does not meet the needs or the challenges of all the members of this community, and as a result, I encourage you to please pass the proposed camping ordinance so that we can properly address the issues of current time and keep progressing forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for staff? Seeing no further requests to speak, I'll close the public hearing. And with no additional questions, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to table the second reading of ordinance number 3228 upon review from the Housing and Human Services in coordination with Legal and APD to incorporate input from Housing and Human Services and come back to us for a revisit of the first reading within six months.
I'll second.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. This is a very difficult issue for our community on a lot of different levels, and I empathize with the citizens of Ashland, housed and unhoused, for having this abruptly come to the forefront of our community. I feel like we have a step or two to make here before this ordinance represents Ashland. And I think it's imperative that we continue to make strides in South Ashland with increased safety and security and execution of our community goals, but it troubles me that Legal and APD have drafted this ordinance without our Housing and Human Services input and the houseless community. And I think that it behooves this community to get ahead of any kind of backlash that could come forth from moving this to second reading and then passing it. Among those, I believe that we have a liability exposure with the courts because we don't have it clear enough on here. And I also believe that we have made great strides since January of 2023, when we had camping protests downtown in our plaza and in public spaces. We have made strides bringing the communities together, and we have identified a lot of problems in South Ashland that we need to address, behaviors that need to address. I don't think that waiting six months to get additional information to make this ordinance more whole is going to proliferate bad behavior in our community. So although I'm very supportive of many elements of this ordinance, I don't think we're there yet. And I think that we are a smart, capable, loving community that will get there, but we need a little bit more time.
Counselor Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo much of what Counselor Hanson said. I think that we've struggled with understanding a lot of the provisions and the implications of elements of this ordinance. It is a complex area of law that is still evolving. We do know that we have an ordinance now that our police are able to enforce as long as we are able to provide a designated space or shelter. I think that that gives us the space to continue to work through the other services, the other resources that we need to put in place so that our community can ensure that people who do not have a place to sleep or rest during the day have a place that is both safe for them and safe for the rest of our community. I'm frankly quite concerned with this ordinance, that it has a crazy quilt of places that are prohibited that leaves out lots and lots of places where it's actually not very safe, either for people to put up a tent and spend the night and part of the next day, if that's what they're doing, or for the rest of our community. And I'm thinking of places up in the watershed, other places that really are not good places for people to be camping, but that are not covered by this. So I think we can do a better job. I think we have the time to be able to do that. We can take more input into this. This did not have a lot of input, other than in these public hearings with a dozen and a half people last time and four or five people this time. I think all of this input has been very, very useful, and we should take the time to do it right.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the fact that we are all trying to arrive at the same place. That said, I still firmly believe that this is about behaviors that are not acceptable from any member in a society or community, and it is not about status of being unhoused. It is true that the current ordinance, 10.46, was crafted in 2008, 2012. You can look in our municipal code at any ordinance and find out when it was amended or put in. Basically, what 10.46 says right now is, "I don't care where you go, but you can't stay here." That's how that's interpreted. And we talked about kindness earlier. I can think of nothing less kind than telling someone, "I don't care where you go, but you can't stay here." The current ordinance language is ambiguous, and it lends itself to various interpretations. What this language does, and two weeks ago, when we debated this at first reading, I went home and I stayed up sorting it out, and I was able to find that the path through the current language, while it's difficult to read legalese, I was able to create a very simple path. It's actually crystal clear. You can follow a very simple order of operations. And what it does is it takes out the ambiguity, and it gives clear guidance. As Chief O'Meara said, it will never be perfect. There will always be decisions that are made in real time. But the fact is, is it actually does the opposite of what I think my colleagues are implying, and that is that it gives a positive emphasis and onus on the city to create proactive definitions of time, place, and manner. It is setting a timeline to be able to get to yes as quickly as possible. And I furthermore think that the Housing and Human Services Committee should spend, and I believe they want to spend their time, working on housing solutions. So it is with that that I would like to move forward. I will vote no on tabling this. Thank you.
Counselor Blue?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm not going to piggyback and belabor the point. I agree with all that Counselor Dale said. I will add that I think that it would be a tremendous mistake to send this back to the Housing Committee as Counselor Dale said. As Counselor Dale said, I think that there is a lot of desire to move towards housing solutions, and specifically with the Homelessness Master Plan Subcommittee, the whole goal is to focus on solutions, on helping folks, and doing the other side of what we're talking about in this ordinance. And if we send it back to that Subcommittee, I fear that we'll get bogged down talking about details, and we will not be able to come to any consensus in six months on real positive things that we could be doing for the houseless community. So I will also be voting no on tabling this.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all that's been said, the last couple of meetings that we've had regarding this ordinance. And I want to start off first by saying, being unhoused does not make you a criminal. And it's not a crime, but for the grace of God, go I. What I will say about this ordinance is, is it perfect? No. Can we do better? Yes. However, here we are. And what I would like to say about this is, when I read it and I thought about it, I realized, no matter whether you are housed, unhoused, whether you live in a tent, a car, a shelter, house, whatever, we all have to abide by rules and regulations. And when I read more of this ordinance, I realized accountability. Accountability meaning, this ordinance holds the Ashland Police Department accountable. This ordinance holds the city and the councilors accountable to provide shelter and a space for our residents who live here. And then for residents, it holds us accountable to be good neighbors to each other. So I appreciate all that's been said, but I will not support tabling this. I believe we need to move forward. This document can be amended, and I believe this ordinance brings us current, which was mentioned earlier. So I will not support tabling it.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Duquesne?
No.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
No.
Bloom?
No.
Hyatt?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion fail. The floor remains open for any additional motions. Counselor Dale?
Thank you. Doug, please keep me honest here. I move to approve the second reading of ordinance number 3228, an ordinance relating to prohibited camping and prohibited occupancy, amending AMC Chapter 10.46.020 through AMC 10.46.050. This includes Section 10.46.010H. Occupy or occupancy means to maintain physical control over a publicly owned area by persons, private property. Wherein the effect is that the general public is excluded from the use of the public property for more than two hours. Occupancies shall not include recreational park use. Section 10.46.020C. Regardless of exceptions in subsection B above, camping is prohibited under any circumstances in which the act of camping includes existence of a fire or gas stove, or when the campsite exceeds 100 square feet, or when located on, attached to, or within one sidewalks, bike paths, walkways, two, Lithia Park, and parks with child or youth recreational equipment, three, the law enforcement areas defined in AMC 10.120.010, four, 250 feet of a preschool, kindergarten, elementary, or secondary school, or a childcare center licensed, certified, or authorized under ORS 329A.250 to 329A.460, ORS 418.205 to 418.970, OAR 419-410-0010, 2OAR 419- correction, 419-490-0170, five, 250 feet of a designated space or shelter, six, 250 feet of a freeway entrance or exits, seven, 150 feet of other campsites, eight, 100 yards of any river or stream, and nine, any fenced tree building or vehicles. And finally, 10.46.030A, subject to AMC 10.46.020 or authorized permit, no person shall occupy street furniture or public area according to the occupancy definition in AMC 10.46.010H. Property owners may be... Property owned by violers shall be subject to the removal process in 10.46.040.
Second.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I know how incredibly difficult this is, and I just want to, again, express my gratitude and appreciation for fellow councilors, for mayor, for staff, for the community on all sides of this tremendously difficult and emotional decision. But I still stand by the fact that this is an updated, and it actually is providing clear guidance and with the intention that we are all here for, which is to find novel solutions to a critical housing problem. Thank you.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, agreed. This has been quite a process. A lot of thought has gone into it and reflection, I'm sure, from everybody. It's never fun working on something where you're regulating behavior and creating rules. And so I very much look forward to this passing, and I look forward to the work that the Homelessness Master Plan Subcommittee will be doing to work on some of those housing solutions. This is just the very beginning. Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment, offer an amendment. I'd like to amend the draft ordinance by deleting the final sentence of the preamble that states, "The objective of this ordinance is to differentiate between those who genuinely lack alternatives and use public spaces out of necessity, and those who have access to suitable alternative spaces and shelter, but instead willfully exploit public spaces for personal gain or advantage to the detriment of the general public that includes the involuntarily homeless population."
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
May I just ask a clarifying question? Was it the last sentence? Last sentence of the preamble. Okay, thank you.
What page is the preamble?
It's the first page.
This one? This one?
It's the sentence that starts at line 30?
It starts the objective.
Counselor Kaplan, would you care to speak to your...
This sentence states an objective for the ordinance, says the objective of the ordinance, that contradicts, frankly, the statement in the previous paragraph, a statement in the previous paragraph that says that it's about protecting the health and safety, and that is not fulfilled in the text that follows throughout the rest of the ordinance. We heard from our police chief at the last meeting that the police do not intend to gather information about what he called people's backstory that would permit a determination about whether a person is voluntarily or involuntarily homeless. So I think that we should just strike this from the preamble.
Counselor Hanson?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Dale?
Yep. Other than I appreciate Counselor Kaplan bringing this to, I have no problem with it. I think that's reasonable, and with the intent and the values that we're trying to move forward with. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion about the amendment? Okay, we will vote on the amendment. Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. And we return back to the primary motion, which has now been amended. For any other discussion, Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. When we met last time, we got to the end of this items process, and I appreciate Counselor Hyatt's additional motion. It came out wrong in the minutes, so we corrected it. I was confused as to what we were voting on then, and I want to take a minute to point out that my intention was not for the Homeless Services Master Plan Subcommittee to take another look at this. When I agreed to what was happening in my mind, it was some sort of representation, whether it be the Housing and Human Services or the council going back and taking another look at this to bring it forward for another first reading. So again, I support doubling down efforts to make South Ashland more safe, to make it more economically viable, to make it more vibrant, to put resources into South Ashland, to bring it up, to make all citizens. And that especially includes people around our new homeless shelter, the folks that go to school there, that work there, that live there. All of that is near and dear to my heart. So although I'm not going to support this, I want the community to know that I think we're doing good work here. And should this pass, I don't think that this is necessarily a terrible thing for Ashland, but our work isn't over. And our inclusion of a solution for all parties isn't done. And I implore us with this master plan to really think about what we're going to look seven generations out and try to get ahead of this. So for what it's worth, I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Any further conversation? Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, as you all know, I'm not convinced that this ordinance really does effectively serve our city in addressing homelessness in our community. We already have a camping ordinance, and I agree with Counselor Dale that it's out of date and needs some improvement. I don't think this is a sufficient improvement. But it does, our police are able to enforce compliance with that ordinance in compliance with the Ninth Circuit judgments. This ordinance that we have before us introduces us complicated language when we have no shelter or other place for unhoused people to sleep. We talked about the map tonight, that it changes. It can change, you know, from week to week or month to month as we make changes in the parks or the public lands that we have. I think that's the wrong approach to talk about where we shouldn't have. It's just too crazy. We, as a city, need to be able to tell homeless people affirmatively where they may sleep or rest, and help them connect with capable social service professionals. That's the way to help people out of homelessness, not presenting them with a crazy quilt of ever-changing prohibited public spaces, and then just sit by and hope that they pick the places that are safe and reasonable, both for them and for the community at large. I'm going to vote no.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I would just add that we have the night lawn, we have an emergency weather shelter, we have a 24-hour shelter, we have ORA here in Ashland. I think we're doing a pretty good job, and I'm sure the Homelessness Master Plan will come up with even more solutions. I move to call the question.
Is there a second? There's not required? Okay, so we will vote on the motion to call the question. Roll call, please. Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So the motion is to call the question, which means it would end debate, and we would simply go from here to the vote on the original, on the main motion?
It's not a new motion.
It's right.
No, I have additional information to put forth. I say no. I vote no. Thank you.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Okay. The vote on the main motion? And does everyone understand what we're voting on at this point?
I have one more.
There's no more debate, because council has just voted to call the question. So, but I want to make sure everybody understands what we are voting on now, which is the main motion to pass the amended ordinance, the ordinance as amended. Okay. Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
No.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Motion pass. Thank you. Before we take a break, I want to create an opportunity, if this council chooses to do so, to direct staff regarding a positive map, the space where people could go if they get in a situation where we don't have a designated space. Is there interest on this council in directing staff to create that sort of altered map?
Yes.
Is there?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Counselor, Sabrina, do you need anything else from us to clarify that?
Mayors, is there a timeframe for that? Can we give a timeframe?
You can.
Can we... Sabrina, what's a reasonable timeframe?
The ordinance doesn't take effect for 30 days, so we would have a deadline for 30 days.
Can you generate something in 30 days? Is that a reasonable timeframe? Okay.
Yes.
30 days?
30 days? Does that sound... Am I seeing head nodding? Yes. Okay, so you've got that direction? Okay, we will take an eight-minute break. Councilors, please be back in your seats at 8:15 by the clock to the right. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that we have the night lawn, we have an emergency weather shelter, we have a 24-hour shelter, we have ORA here in Ashland. I think we're doing a pretty good job, and I'm sure the Homelessness Master Plan will come up with even more solutions. I move to call the question.
Is there a second? There's not required? Okay, so we will vote on the move, on the motion to call the question. Roll call, please. Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So, the motion is to call the question, which means it would end debate, and we would simply go from here to the, to the vote on the original, on the main motion.
It's not a new motion, it's just...
It's, right.
No, I have additional information to put forth. I say no, I vote no. Thank you.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Okay, the vote on the main motion, and does everyone understand what we're voting on at this point?
I have one more.
There's no more debate, because counsel has just voted to call the question. But I want to make sure everybody understands what we are voting on now, which is the main motion to pass the amended ordinance, the ordinance as amended. Okay, roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
No.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Before we take a break, I want to create an opportunity, if this council chooses to do so, to direct staff regarding a positive map, the space where people could go if they get in a situation where we don't have a designated space. Is there interest on this council in directing staff to create that sort of altered map?
Yes.
Is there? Yes. Yes. Okay. Counselor, Sabrina, do you have, do you need anything else from us to clarify that?
Mayors, is there a timeframe for that? Can we get, can we give a timeframe?
You can.
Can we, Sabrina, what's a reasonable timeframe?
The ordinance, the ordinance doesn't take effect for 30 days, so we would have a dent before 30 days.
Okay.
Can you generate something in 30 days? Is that a reasonable timeframe? Okay.
Yes.
30 days?
30 days. Does that sound, am I seeing head nodding? Yes. Okay, so you've got that direction. Okay, we will, we will take an eight-minute break. Counselors, please be back in your seats at 8:15 by the clock to the right. Thank you.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for putting this forward. I'm happy with, with all of the metrics that you put forth. I'm wondering if there's some value, though, in having this come back initially as a study session, so that we could have robust discussion on both the results of the Homelessness Master Plan, looking at some of this data, rather than doing it in a business meeting where we're kind of, we've got other items we need to get to, and that way we can really just have a dedicated session for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like there's agreement for that. So, any other, oh, Counselor Hanson?
Yes. I'm very agreeable to this, and I think it is essential for our community to have input and to evaluate what's working and what also needs to be added. I believe it's somewhat a backwards, reverse engineer to what I was proposing earlier, which is more planning before ordinance and execution. However, here we are, and I appreciate the collaborative spirit in which it was proposed last meeting. And moving forward, I know that we have the right people on the bus, so to speak. I just want to make sure that we get the right people in those seats on the bus in order to give us the correct communication and feedback that we deserve as a community. Because we will make mistakes, and if we don't have a mechanism to fix them, we're not doing a good service in our, in our community. So, thank you, and this is, this is, this is progress.
We do have one speaker, so are there any additional questions for Counselor Hyatt? Okay, so the one speaker is Debbie Nieswander?
I guess I'm coming up here to say, if we're going to do this in a study session, then I can withhold my comments until then.
Okay. Any further questions of Counselor Hyatt? Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Counselor Hyatt?
I move to amend the original motion, directing a six-month review of ordinance 3228 to include the review be completed by the Ashland City Council with the use of the Housing and Human Services Subcommittee Master Plan recommendation and key data from the Ashland Police Department to inform updates to ordinance 3228 as appropriate.
A second.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that the work we do up here in a public meeting setting
can be imperfect and can require a relook. And I want to thank Counselor Kaplan for coming to me with his concern, and I want to thank those who are willing to look at this again, so that we can make it effective in its initial intent and its initial goal. It is nice to work with a team that can disagree agreeably and still work toward a common goal. I am really inspired by what conversation has occurred here this evening. It's not an easy one, and we all want this to be in a better place. So, I want to thank this group for this work. I want to thank this group for your willingness to reconsider my original motion, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring this back to the table.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes. Again, I'd like to thank Counselor Hyatt for making this revision, like Counselor Bloom, who said earlier this evening how excited he is about the work of the Subcommittee on the Homelessness Services Master Plan. I think that's incredibly important work. I'm excited by that, and I'm glad that we can, we'll be able to benefit from that work without putting an additional burden on that Subcommittee to do a review of the ordinance as well, which is not, that would be a misplaced use of their talents, I think, and our need. So, thank you very much for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to support it.
Any additional comments? Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt and Counselor Kaplan, for this collaboration. It's extremely important. And also, Counselor Hanson, for what you had just said about having the right people in the right positions, working towards the same things with the diversity of ideas of how we can make this better. And I think what's important is, is that we are able to take that data, measure it, compare it to what, what we have now, and to really actively and proactively see if what we're doing is working, and how we can make that change and move to a better. So, I too really appreciate the teamwork of this council. This is extremely difficult, but I just truly, truly am grateful for our collaboration and working towards what we think are the same goals. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. And in this analysis, I hope we can look at how many people that want housing are able to get housing in 2024 and beyond, because one of the biggest challenges is finding people housing. We need to build. This community needs to build. Builders that are sitting on shovel-ready plans, please build. Land bank, land trust, affordable housing, all these things are coming together very slowly. It's glacial. It's really hard to be up here and not see those, those, those buildings being built. So, let's all stick together, let's all hold hands, let's all shovel together, pound some nails, evaluate this in six months, see how we can make it better. And then, one of those metrics I really want to look at is how many people are we putting in houses that want to be in houses?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Hyatt?
Okay. So, as you read in the packet, on December 5th, after our conversation on the first reading of ordinance 3228, it was clear that a more considered process was desired by this body and members of our community, and rightfully so. That considered process got put into a very quickly worked framework, a framework that is not workable, given people's abilities, timeframes, and the constraints that we currently have with existing charter, specifically for the Subcommittee on the Houseless Master Plan. In my original motion, I asked to place this six-month review and check with the Housing Master Plan Subcommittee. And since the 5th, I have had the benefit of learning from some of our liaisons to that committee, specifically Mr. Kaplan, that it would create an undue burden, given the magnitude of the work that is currently tasked to that team. So, with that, bringing forward the spirit of the motion, which was a six-month review of ordinance 3228, and again, that review can include anything or delete anything that was in our packet communication, with the specific purpose of looking at 3228 as it was just put forward for enactment, assessing any elements of improvement, any elements that have gone sideways and need to be addressed, any learnings that we move through over these next six months, so that we can turn it into a more workable and appropriate ordinance, and ensure that we don't create unintended consequences by the work we just completed here 10 minutes ago.
So, with that, are there any questions of Counselor Hyatt?
Well, I would actually say, I think we just need a few minutes to discuss what a six-month check-in might look like. I know in my conversation with Counselor Kaplan, we had looked at a variety of metrics that may help inform us six months from now on the ordinance itself and what it looks like in practice. I think what I would need to understand before a new motion is put on the table is what this body would like to see in that six-month check-in. And I know, just from the conversation here this evening, Counselor Hanson has some ideas that he has brought out. I'm sure there are thoughts there, and others may also have ideas. But the goal of the motion was to provide a minute to review and reflect and amend as appropriate, if necessary. So, what does that look like to this body, to provide that considered deliberative process that we spoke of back on the 5th?
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for putting this forward. I'm happy with, with all of the metrics that you put forth. I'm wondering if there's some value, though, in having this come back initially as a study session, so that we could have robust discussion on both the results of the Homelessness Master Plan, looking at some of this data, rather than doing it in a business meeting where we're kind of, we've got other items we need to get to, and that way we can really just have a dedicated session for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like there's agreement for that. So, any other, oh, Counselor Hanson?
Yes. I'm very agreeable to this, and I think it is essential for our community to have input and to evaluate what's working and what also needs to be added. I believe it's somewhat a backwards, reverse engineer to what I was proposing earlier, which is more planning before ordinance and execution. However, here we are, and I appreciate the collaborative spirit in which it was proposed last meeting. And moving forward, I know that we have the right people on the bus, so to speak. I just want to make sure that we get the right people in those seats on the bus in order to give us the correct communication and feedback that we deserve as a community. Because we will make mistakes, and if we don't have a mechanism to fix them, we're not doing a good service in our, in our community. So, thank you, and this is, this is, this is progress.
We do have one speaker, so are there any additional questions for Counselor Hyatt? Okay, so the one speaker is Debbie Nieswander?
I guess I'm coming up here to say, if we're going to do this in a study session, then I can withhold my comments until then.
Okay. Any further questions of Counselor Hyatt? Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Counselor Hyatt?
I move to amend the original motion, directing a six-month review of ordinance 3228 to include the review be completed by the Ashland City Council with the use of the Housing and Human Services Subcommittee Master Plan recommendation and key data from the Ashland Police Department to inform updates to ordinance 3228 as appropriate.
A second. A second.
Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that the work we do up here in a public meeting setting can be imperfect and can require a relook. And I want to thank Counselor Kaplan for coming to me with his concern, and I want to thank those who are willing to look at this again, so that we can make it effective in its initial intent and its initial goal. It is nice to work with a team that can disagree agreeably and still work toward a common goal. I am really inspired by what conversation has occurred here this evening. It's not an easy one, and we all want this to be in a better place. So, I want to thank this group for this work. I want to thank this group for your willingness to reconsider my original motion, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring this back to the table.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes. Again, I'd like to thank Counselor Hyatt for making this revision, like Counselor Bloom, who said earlier this evening how excited he is about the work of the Subcommittee on the Homelessness Services Master Plan. I think that's incredibly important work. I'm excited by that, and I'm glad that we can, we'll be able to benefit from that work without putting an additional burden on that Subcommittee to do a review of the ordinance as well, which is not, that would be a misplaced use of their talents, I think, and our need. So, thank you very much for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to support it.
Any additional comments? Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt and Counselor Kaplan, for this collaboration. It's extremely important. And also, Counselor Hanson, for what you had just said about having the right people in the right positions, working towards the same things with the diversity of ideas of how we can make this better. And I think what's important is, is that we are able to take that data, measure it, compare it to what, what we have now, and to really actively and proactively see if what we're doing is working, and how we can make that change and move to a better. So, I too really appreciate the teamwork of this council. This is extremely difficult, but I just truly, truly am grateful for our collaboration and working towards what we think are the same goals. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. And in this analysis, I hope we can look at how many people that want housing are able to get housing in 2024 and beyond, because one of the biggest challenges is finding people housing. We need to build. This community needs to build. Builders that are sitting on shovel-ready plans, please build. Land bank, land trust, affordable housing, all these things are coming together very slowly. It's glacial. It's really hard to be up here and not see those, those, those buildings being built. So, let's all stick together, let's all hold hands, let's all shovel together, pound some nails, evaluate this in six months, see how we can make it better. And then, one of those metrics I really want to look at is how many people are we putting in houses that want to be in houses?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. We move on now to the City Charter Amendment for the May election. Welcome, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a slide I've been waiting a few meetings to show you. I'm going to pull it up. All right, so we'll get that up in a minute. So, as you may recall, October 16th, in a study session, staff was directed to provide council a timeline and ballot language for two charter changes for the spring election. The two articles to be considered are Article 14, Chief of Police Powers and Duties, Section 2, to update the language in Article 14, Section 2, allowing the Chief of Police to designate an officer to attend city council meetings and act in his or her stead as sergeant of arms. And then, Article 3, elective officers, and Article 6, recorder, to remove the city recorder as an elected official in any article provisions related to the duties of that role in recognition of substantial reduction in the position's responsibilities to become solely administrative in nature. So, a few things to keep in mind with this upcoming potential ballot measures. There's no fiscal impact to the city of Ashland. The primary general election and even numbered years are the county clerk budgets for, so the city does not have to contribute to that. The purpose of the recorder is to update the current professional standards, reduce the risk to the city. The change in the job over time is not reflected in the current charter language. Ensure quality...
Any further questions of Counselor Hyatt? Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Counselor Hyatt?
I move to amend the original motion, directing a six-month review of ordinance 3228 to include the review be completed by the Ashland City Council with the use of the Housing and Human Services Subcommittee Master Plan recommendation and key data from the Ashland Police Department to inform updates to ordinance 3228 as appropriate.
A second. A second.
Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that the work we do up here in a public meeting setting can be imperfect and can require a relook. And I want to thank Counselor Kaplan for coming to me with his concern. And I want to thank those who are willing to look at this again so that we can make it effective in its initial intent and its initial goal. It is nice to work with a team that can disagree agreeably and still work toward a common goal. I am really inspired by what conversation has occurred here this evening. It's not an easy one, and we all want this to be in a better place. So I want to thank this group for this work. I want to thank this group for your willingness to reconsider my original motion. And I appreciate the opportunity to bring this back to the table.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, again, I'd like to thank Counselor Hyatt for making this revision. Like Counselor Bloom, who said earlier this evening how excited he is about the work of the Subcommittee on the Homelessness Services Master Plan. I think that's incredibly important work. I'm excited by that, and I'm glad that we can, we'll be able to benefit from that work without putting an additional burden on that Subcommittee to do a review of the ordinance as well, which is not, that would be a misplaced use of their talents, I think, and our need. So thank you very much for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to support it.
Any additional comments? Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt and Counselor Kaplan, for this collaboration. It's extremely important. And also, Counselor Hanson, for what you had just said about having the right people in the right positions, working towards the same things with the diversity of ideas of how we can make this better. And I think what's important is that we are able to take that data, measure it, compare it to what we have now, and to really actively and proactively see if what we're doing is working and how we can make that change and move to a better. So I too really appreciate the teamwork of this council. This is extremely difficult, but I just truly, truly am grateful for our collaboration in working towards what we think are the same goals. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. And in this analysis, I hope we can look at how many people that want housing are able to get housing in 2024 and beyond. Because one of the biggest challenges is finding people housing. We need to build. This community needs to build. Builders that are sitting on shovel-ready plans, please build. Land bank, land trust, affordable housing. All these things are coming together very slowly. It's glacial. It's really hard to be up here and not see those buildings being built. So let's all stick together. Let's all hold hands. Let's all shovel together, pound some nails, evaluate this in six months, see how we can make it better. And then one of those metrics I really want to look at is how many people are we putting in houses that want to be in houses?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. We move on now to the city charter amendment for the May election. Welcome, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a slide. I've been waiting a few meetings to show you. I'm going to pull it up. All right, so we'll get that up in a minute. So as you may recall, October 16th in a study session, staff was directed to provide council a timeline and ballot language for two charter changes for the spring election. The two articles to be considered are Article 14, Chief of Police Powers and Duties, Section 2, to update the language in Article 14, Section 2, allowing the Chief of Police to designate an officer to attend city council meetings and act in his or her stead as Sergeant at Arms. And then Article 3, elective officers, and Article 6, recorder, to remove the city recorder as an elected official in any article provisions related to the duties of that role and recognition of substantial reduction in the position's responsibilities to become solely administrative in nature. So a few things to keep in mind with this upcoming potential ballot measures. There's no fiscal impact to the city of Ashland. The primary general election and even numbered years are the county clerk budgets for, so the city does not have to contribute to that. The purpose of the recorder is to update the current professional standards, reduce the risk to the city. The change in the job over time is not reflected in the current charter language. Ensure qualifications beyond being a voter residing within city limits for that job position, and ensure that the job compensation matches the position responsibilities. And for the Sergeant-at-Arms, this will allow increased operational discretion to the Chief of Police for operational needs and then work and training needs. In the packet, you have a few things. You have the timeline for where you will see us come back to you for various votes, as well as a discussion of the fiscal impacts I just mentioned, and then some potential ballot language and the resolutions that would go with the ballot items. We would come back to you January 16th to vote on final ballot language through a resolution. Legal has drafted us, included in your packet, some resolutions to take a look at. And speaking with Legal, I think we have some more work to do with the recorder one. We feel good about the draft for Sergeant-at-Arms. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Dale?
Just a quick question. I just want to ask a clarification question relative to the Article 14 of Chief of Police. Would this change in the charter, it still allows for the city manager of the Chief of Police to create additional, like a policy to create guidelines or stipulations about who may fill that position without an actual charter change, Craig or qualifications, or a certain rank or leadership level, so forth? I just want to be able to know that that can still be done with this.
Yes, so for example, you know, the Chief of Police and the city manager can determine the policy that, for example, it won't be an on-duty officer or that it will be a sergeant or above who will be attending, or they have to attend special training to be the Sergeant-at-Arms. So I think that's policy things that would come into place with that change in the charter.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Sabrina. I have a few questions, and I meant to get these to you earlier today, and I didn't get to it. So I'm sorry. But this is on the city recorder. I know I've heard that the job description of the city recorder is different than what it used to be and what I guess it is in the charter. It would be useful, I think, not tonight, obviously, but maybe for when it comes back in January, to have the actual job description of, you know, of the city recorder, so we know, you know, exactly what the duties are and what the, therefore, what the specialized knowledge, skills, and abilities are required to perform that function versus what, you know, might or might not be that the person who actually gets elected would have. And then also, I think, is the salary range for that. If we could do a job salary analysis, I think you alluded to it in the packet, that the HR director would do that, would need to do that at some point. Be useful to have that information as well in the packet in January, comparing the current salary for this elected position with the salary range for somebody occupying a position, an administrative position, with that job description. Is that possible?
Yes, so you will see some salary information already in there. So we would do a similar look, so how we do kind of looks at salaries. We pick our comparable cities as well as those that we compete with. So those in the valley are typically where we pull talent to take a look and see where we would need to fall to be a competitive recruiter for that position.
Can I follow?
Yes.
Yeah, so these, I did see those salaries, and that's what led me to believe that it'd be useful. So all of those other cities, the job description of the city recorder is exactly or similar to what our city recorder's job description would be? Are we talking about apples and apples? Are we talking about apples and oranges?
Yeah, great question. So some of them, yes, some of them, no. So depending on the city, they have various functions. Sometimes it's city recorder slash, you know, as we have here as well. So that will be something that we'll look at more in depth as well. And just as a quick overview of recorder duties, and we'll definitely get that example of a job description to you. But the main, the main job of the recorder currently, as Alyssa can probably attest to, has to deal with council meetings and minutes. That's a huge time that the recorder spends with that. And then also with liquor licenses and public records requests, and then records retention. So that's kind of where some of the expertise around the ORS requirements for records retention, how long things need to be stored, varies by record type. So that's the kind of experience we'd be looking to bring in for the recorder position, as well as the ability to type quickly.
Just one more, follow up on the same line. And then job duties that are no longer in the recorder's job description? Because that's...
Yeah, so I think back in 1908, they acted as the treasurer. Of course, as the city has changed over time, we now have a full finance department that acts as the treasurer and conducts all of the financial business of the city. So the recorder does not act as that check and balance as they have done perhaps prior, and that has been quite a while that we've had a finance department.
Thank you.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. Thanks, Sabrina. So I did have a question, kind of what Counselor Kaplan was touching on. So on January 16th is when we'll have the language that'll be on the ballot, right? So when I look at Article 3 about for the recorder, and I saw what you had up there, it can be either leave as is as an elected position or appointed, right?
So the question is to leave it as an elected or not, right?
Exactly. And that language will come back to us on the 16th. Okay, and then when I look at this, one more, and then I'll be done, Mayor, is that when I look at this as a whole, we are voting on this tonight. And in voting on this, Article 14, I support. And I just wanted to check to make sure that in Article 3, the language will come back as a choice to the people that they can either leave it an elected position or appointed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and we're not asking for a vote tonight. We just are here if you have any additional staff direction for us to bring back January 16th. We just didn't want to surprise.
Okay, it's clear.
Yeah, I think, thank you for that clarification, Counselor Duquesne. I think it's important for us to understand. It has come, it's tried to come in front of us a couple of times. So it's good to know where we are at in that timeline. Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I remember in a previous discussion, when we first kind of started having this discussion, we kind of all seemed to agree, and maybe I was, I'm misremembering that, that if we did go to an appointed position, that that position would fall under Legal Department and not under the city manager's office. I'm just curious, is that something that needs to be included in the ballot language? Or is that a separate action that the council takes?
So I think it would be hired, just as any other position is hired. And I think it could fall wherever makes sense. So the recorder interacts with the city manager's office the most to deal with the agenda and council business. It could reside in Legal.
It wouldn't, if I may?
Yes.
I wasn't part of that conversation, and I'm not sure, well, there's probably one reason, and that is, is that my wonderful staff has always stepped up and done the recorder things, but would not necessarily be in my, in the legal department. It's because I have a wonderful staff member that's willing to do that. So just by the fact that it tends to look like it's coming out of my office, that may be. Typically, I would see this as being under the city manager as an administrative, much like the finance director, who would be recorder. Now, there may be other reasons I haven't thought about that you folks had thought of. But again, this is, I mean, they do liquor licensing, you know, and there's some legal, I mean, and also there's some legal stuff with respect to, well, I work with all the departments, so I mean, it's not like the recorder would be any different than any of the other departments.
Go ahead, Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, if I could follow up, I think, you know, again, if I'm remembering correctly, a lot of the reasoning was because they deal with the liquor license, because they deal with public record requests, that these are legal elements, one. And I think another discussion point, two, is a separation of powers element, that, you know, a way of kind of dividing up some of the responsibilities and the reporting. The city attorney reports directly to council. City manager reports directly to the council, having that kind of split up. I think, if I'm remembering, again, it's been so long since we first decided to discuss this, that we all kind of agreed on that. So I'm just wondering what the process would look like, the appropriate place to have that conversation.
Well, what I will do is I'll go back and look at the minutes that you folks were involved in at a work session. Oftentimes, again, a work session, it's on a Monday, that's when I have another, sorry, I apologize, but that's just, the other day I had my meetings. So I'll go back and look and come up, and then I'll, I'll do some goods, you know, kind of some positive and negatives type of analysis for why someone would be in my office versus city manager without...
Yeah, and if I could, there's a difference between being appointed and hiring a professional person. So if council's interested in appointing this position, then they would answer directly to council.
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
So then, therefore, I think the charter outlines that it would be to the city manager's discretion of where this person would lie within the city, which...
Well, again, I mean, that's why I'm wondering, is this a discussion we need to have about the ballot language so that it does state that? And in general conversation, if that's, you know, the direction that everybody wants to go with that.
Just to clarify your point, that maybe the language needs to clarify that it would come under the management of the city manager? Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, I think there's some good points to say that it would fall under the city attorney's office.
Right, so I think this is a good time to just kind of circle back to the transition that we've gone through from a mayor administrator to council manager form of government. And in that form, if it is a hired position, it sits under the city manager's purview outside of the attorney. We would have to create a whole nother position. We don't get to say it sits under Legal at the council level, is my understanding.
Right.
Is that correct?
So the city manager hires everyone technically, even like the assistant city attorney? So the way the charter is now, it would be the city manager's decision, unless that person is appointed, where they would fall. Yeah.
Counselor Hyatt?
It's all my fault. I was the one that asked the question last time. And just to save Doug some digging, my civics education leads me to feel that documents and records are the property of the people. And by extension, maintaining objectivity and accountability to the public is essential. And it was my opinion that that is well-served being housed within Legal. I recognize fully what the charter vests in the city manager, but that was my opinion at the time, still is. My question, with regard to how this is going to progress, it's a yay or nay on whether to hire or elect? And with that decision of the people in hand, if they retain elected, then we're going to address the job description that's in the charter?
Yeah, I think asking more than one question related to a similar item may be confusing. I think it would be confusing for me. And so if the citizens decide to retain an elected recorder, I think it would be who of us to go back in the November election and clean up the charter language that dictates what the recorder does, since those no longer match with current duties.
Thank you for that clarity.
Great.
Any other questions for any other elements? So you needed direction from us to carry on with this, with the timeline, and you've taken the feedback here. Any concerns about the timeline? Any final comments? Do you have what you need from us, Sabrina?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. All right, let's move on then to the council chambers' audio/video broadcast updates.
I'm just going to stay here to save time. Okay, so you have seen this before. We came before council to ask for a contract and money to upgrade our wonderful audiovisual equipment in council. After the IT department did some analysis of the vendor we were looking to work with and worked with RV TV, we discovered that it wasn't going to work well the way we wanted. So we stopped and reevaluated, found a better vendor, worked with RV TV to make sure that it's going to work. And I am back to ask again because of the dollar threshold and a different vendor that we get permission to move forward with this new vendor and upgrade our audiovisual in here. Our hope is to not have a repeat of the Zoom incident like last night and make the audio on both sides better for everyone. Some new microphones, just all around better experience for everyone. As by state law, we're required to have hybrid meetings, so we need to make sure that we are meeting that requirement that works for everyone.
Questions? Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. So Sabrina, I believe this is not budgeted for, correct?
That's correct. Originally, we had some funds left over. And then with the new budget, we did not roll those funds over, but we'll have the ability to absorb it with an administration.
And I don't know, when you say the ability to absorb it, and something that I did see that was mentioned that to be in compliant with House Bill, where did it go?
Twenty-five sixty.
Twenty-five sixty, thank you, Doug. The governing body is required to have the ability to have reasonable possibility to make all meetings accessible remotely. And when I look at the amount of money that is asked for this, I don't feel comfortable supporting this, not at this time, because we do have the ability. I wasn't here yesterday, so I don't know what happened. However, there's been times when I've Zoomed, others have Zoomed, and I think that this is nice and wonderful, but not now. I don't feel like we should look for an opportunity to absorb it. I don't feel like this is reasonable to happen now. So I just wanted to make sure about the budget.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sabrina? So with that, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Hyatt?
I move to approve the contract with Key Code Media and pursue the council chambers' audio/video upgrade project.
Second.
Counselor Hyatt?
Very sensitive to the variety of emails we receive with regularity about folks' inability to clearly hear the conversation when they're tuning in via RV TV. And I think that it is vital that folks can listen, understand, and take in the information from home. I feel that this investment is one that has been discussed for the full time that I have rented this chair. And so for the ability of folks to fully participate in their government, I feel that this investment in infrastructure is prudent, appropriate, and supportive of the community's needs. So therefore, that's why I make the motion.
Counselor Bloom? Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No. Thank you. We move on now to new business, the first of two potential support letters that I am bringing before council. The first one is about the Oregon Jail-Based Medication for Opioid Use Disorder Grant Program. Representative Marsh is bringing legislation forward to the Oregon Legislature to create or expand jail-based counseling and was called Medication for Opioid Use Disorder, or MOUD is the acronym, programs that serve adults in custody that have opioid use disorder. So the program would be established within and administered by the Criminal Justice Commission in collaboration with the Oregon Health Authority. And the two agencies would provide technical assistance and help establish best practices for jails statewide. One of the things that we know is that when a person is incarcerated, there's an opportunity to help them if they suffer from this type of disorder. And yet it is a missed opportunity because those programs don't exist in our jails. So I have drafted the letter that you find in your packet. This is one of the things that we have talked in our community about, working to address some of the upstream problems that are creating issues in our community and helping to get re... the upstream problems that are creating issues in our community and helping to get resources to programs to help address those before the person ends up struggling inside our community. So with that, I would just open it up for any questions. Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Kaplan?
I move to support the letter drafted to Representative Marsh with expressing the council's support for this program.
Second. Counsel Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. It's, in addition to the opportunity that you spoke to, it's also an opportunity to relieve tremendous suffering because when somebody is addicted to an opioid and is incarcerated, it is often a forced withdrawal, which can be, you know, very damaging and indeed. So providing this, these resources to, to address opioid addiction for incarcerated individuals is a, is a humane and sensible thing to do.
We had a couple of seconds. Was it Counsel Duquesne?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you. I too am grateful for this. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. It's much needed, and I am glad to support it.
We did have someone sign up to speak, but I believe he is not here at this point. Benjamin Ben Baruch, are you still here? Okay. Any other discussion? Counsel Hyatt?
I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you too to Representative Marsh, because this is exactly what we are looking for in terms of navigating both like behavior and addiction services to help us more comprehensively address the needs of our community. And having these programs in place upstream definitely helps us help folks here in Ashland in a more effective manner. So my gratitude to Representative Marsh and thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. I'll happily be supporting this motion.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Alyssa? Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. I will get that letter out later this week. The next item on our agenda is the consideration of the League of Oregon Cities' recommendations for revisions to Measure 110. And so this again is coming from concerns in the community about, I think, some unanticipated consequences and a lot of conversation across the state in terms of how the legislature might revise Measure 110. The, the elements put in front of you, the eleven recommendations, come from a collaboration of the League of Oregon Cities, the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, Oregon District Attorneys Association, and the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. I have reached out to both Sheriff Sickler and also Chief Omira to talk with them about this, this element. And also, also, I think one of the conversations that I have had also with, with policymakers is that the Measure 110 was passed and it changed the criminal element of this, the criminality of drug, this drug use for these particular substances without having the, the support system in place yet. And there's a question about whether it is appropriate to do any sort of reverting back to that criminality when those support services are not in place. And so you will see from the attached letter that I'm offering up to the council that while it supports all eleven of the recommendations, it prioritizes the elements around creating appropriate treatment plans and essentially says, you should consider the question of criminalizing only after we have the appropriate support elements in place. And I just wanted to explain why, why I left it in there in that way. And that is because what we're seeing is particularly with fentanyl, that children are getting into this in their homes and they're dying from just simply coming into contact with it. So it is different on some level than some of the other drugs that people might use at home. And I would leave that to the legislature to decide what, if they want to, to have those kinds of, any sort of curtailment around that inside a person's private home. But wanted to bring something forward that, that the council could consider so that this body can weigh in as many other cities and counties are weighing into the legislature about this. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate your initiative in bringing this forward. It's a complicated, complicated issue. And I know that there's been lots of, there've been lots of hearings at the, at the legislature on this by people that are a lot more informed and knowledgeable about this than me. So I feel, I have to say, I feel a little bit out of my depth in, in trying to, you know, parse through all of the, you know, different implications of each of the different, the eleven different recommendations from the League of Oregon Cities. I could, personally, I would have absolutely no qualms about supporting all of the treatment and community-focused solutions, the policy proposals number seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. There may be some of the others, the policy, the reclassification of their three that reclassifies misdemeanors. I, I wouldn't really feel comfortable at this time supporting that. I don't really feel like I know enough about it, haven't really studied the, the matter in great depth and haven't had the advantage of all of the deliberations that are going on at the state level. So, and then I guess there's a couple of others that are not reclassification. I could possibly get, get my head around supporting those as well. But I certainly could wholeheartedly support the, the treatment recommendations there, which I guess are seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
I'll go ahead and ask Chief Omira to come up in case there are any specific questions of him in terms of some of what is driving the, the first six proposals, I believe, are, are more focused on law enforcement. Are there any questions of chief? Okay. Well, I guess that was simple enough. Counsel Hanson?
Yeah, just a comment, Mayor. I, I appreciate the efforts, and I too learned a lot in reading these recommendations. And I don't feel like I'm, I'm, I'm the best person to, you know, to speak, but I believe that you're doing that on our behalf. And I, and I appreciate your letter and how you succinctly come to, come to the support this way. So I will be supporting it. And, and I don't pretend to be a subject matter expert on this. I, I read it with much interest, like I did the, the opiate recommendation as well. I'm, I'm just, I'm just grateful that we're, we're moving forward with, with something to address these problems in our community. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Any final questions before we open the floor for a motion? Counsel Duquesne?
No, I don't have question statements.
Okay. So the floor is open for a motion? Counsel Bloom?
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to direct the mayor to send the included letter to Senator Goldman and Representative Marsh on behalf of the city council with regard to ballot measure 110.
I'll second that.
Counsel Bloom?
I'm, I'm more curious whether I made that motion correctly or not. No, I think, I think this is well-balanced. And I appreciate, you know, the last paragraph here saying that, you know, look, recommendation one is there, but we really want you to put some, some programs in place first. And so, you know, definitely supporting the remaining ten recommendations. I appreciate that. Look, I really, you know, I understand the reasoning behind 110, and, and I support that. But the state has failed to adequately deal with the consequences of that. And so hopefully, this is our way, and I'm sure other communities are doing this as well, of kind of giving a little kick to the legislature to, to maybe step it up a little bit. So yeah, thank you.
Counsel Hanson?
Yeah, I, I broadly support legalization. And I also know that our, our community worldwide is suffering from problems, many of which are related to overdoses in children. And I, I think that this is a step in the right direction.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dale?
Just a quick, Mayor, thank you for your leadership on behalf of the council for this. It is a very complex issue and add me to the list of, of individuals that this is outside of my scope of understanding the intricacies of these. But that said, I appreciate the spirit in which this is drafted and in that there, we're proposing solutions. They may not be perfect, but we are, we are trying to fix it based on what we've learned. And with that, grateful for, and happy to support this. Thank you for your work.
Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Something I was looking at and listening to Counselor Kaplan, and something that was, I think we all touched on, that this isn't our expertise. However, when I look at policy proposal number eleven, I look forward to that, to the day when we really have the residential security, the facility to be able to take someone and people who are suffering because of opioid addiction, it's real. And I wholeheartedly support this. I'm not an expert, but I do know this is needed. So I, I appreciate what you're doing, Mayor, and I look forward to the progress.
Thank you. Counsel Kaplan?
Yeah, well, I spoke, I spoke earlier about my, my views on this, and I would have been happy to support a motion that went forward with the community-based treatment and community-focused solutions policy, Adam seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. But I, I can't support the whole, the whole, the whole motion bang. I think we, I don't understand all of the implications, and I think we're great getting a little bit out of our scope.
Roll call please. Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
No.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we are at the agenda item of authorization to accept potential grant money for the emergency order shelter. Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor. So we are coming upon a time where council will not meet for an extended period. So I'm here tonight to ask for authorization to accept potential grant money and execute any contracts that be required to extend our 24/7 emergency shelter, also known as 2200 Ashland Street. We have been working with the state to see if we can get additional operating funds to allow us to operate the shelter through the end of March so that we do not have to close the shelter on January 10th. To be able to do that, we need an extension of the emergency declaration by the governor. While we need to get restamped facility plans for the building to ensure that we can continue the dormitory use, we'll need additional operating funds. And then we will work with ORA to continue services at that location. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Counsel Bloom?
I don't have a question. I have a statement, so I can wait.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Sabrina? Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Sabrina. My question is, is in extending this, which I do support that, is there any timeline when we might be looking, and the fire chief's not here, but an opportunity to have fire alarms in this building? I mean, the smoke detectors and...
So we currently have fire alarms and smoke detectors. We don't have a fire sprinkler system.
We don't have a sprinkler.
To install that, we would need to do some pretty heavy-duty construction on the building. So as long as it's occupied, we can't move forward with that. Additionally, we don't have the capital funds to do that.
The funds to do that. Do we still have the person that's doing the, the check-in?
Oh, the fire watch?
Yeah.
Yes, that's a, a part of the contract with ORA. It's a requirement of use of the building.
Okay. Counsel Kaplan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thank you, Mayor. Sabrina, the, there's a, a key element here, which is an extension of the emergency declaration by the governor. And then you say, if the city receives funds from the state of Oregon, that you'll be able to immediately take all of those other steps, meaning the stamped, restamped, the agreement with ORA. We, it's possible we won't get these funds or the urgency order declaration until very close to the 11th, 30 hour. You'll have, you'll be able to, to move on this, you'll be able to get all those things in place.
So we've already started moving forward on the event that we do get this, hopefully that we do get this, so that we do not have to shut down.
Right, okay, and...
You know, if we can stand up a shelter in like 30 days, let's...
You could do this in, in two.
No big deal.
And then, just to be clear, this affects the non-emergency portion of, non-emergency weather portion of the shelter.
Correct. This will not impact the severe weather shelter at all.
Severe weather shelter will, will continue regardless. But we're hopeful that we'll get the funds in, in the order. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. Sabrina, do we have any insights other than speculation as to when we might hear about the emergency declaration extension or non-extension?
So the last I heard is the governor is taking it under advisement, but we have not heard whether or not she's going to do it. So we are in constant communication. So we will hear, I'm sure, immediately if it's signed.
Okay, and a follow-up, if you, if I may. And if this is approved and you have the direction to move forward, this, this body won't be meeting January, first, first week of January like we normally would because of the holiday?
No. So this would give me the authority, so you're basically granting me the authority to accept the grant funds as well as execute the contract with ORA to continue the shelter operations.
Just double checking that you're not going to need a quorum or emergency meeting from this body?
No, that's what we're trying to avoid.
This, this covers it all?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
One, one question I think folks have is, is the March 31st deadline? And is this something that we would expect to extend past March 31st? And my understanding is that for a variety of reasons, the answer is no.
Correct. So there are some limitations on that building, the way it is laid out and the use of the building as a dormitory. We would have to shut down the 24/7 operations and address those. And I believe that needs to be a, a bigger discussion of this body of how we're going to move forward. So the end date would be March 31st.
And, and related to the master planning process that we have, that we'll pick up in the new year, well, you know, after, after the homeless master plan is complete?
Yep.
Question? Counsel Duquesne?
Yeah, I just, I wanted clarity around that. I mean, I just wanted to be very clear. So March 31st, Counselor Hanson said we won't be here for the January, but this gives you an opportunity to move forward. We don't have to come back together. But after March 31st, did I hear it correctly that when you said, Sabrina, it would be shut down and then we would have to re-address this?
Yes. So my understanding from the fire marshal is that we can only utilize this building for so many days in this emergency capacity, and we'll expire those days. And so we'll no longer legally be able to provide the 24/7 sheltering that we've been providing. So we'll need to address the, the capital investment that we need to make in that building. And I believe the, the intent of this body is to have the homeless master plan direct kind of next steps when it comes to that.
And the homeless master plan won't be back until when?
May, June?
June. Yeah.
So that means from March to June, the shelter is closed?
We will not have the 24/7 portion. The severe weather shelter will continue to exist as needed, as dictated by the threshold set.
And then after June, what happens?
I, I think that it would be, this is a great question, Counsel Duquesne, because I think there's a lot of confusion out there about the order of what's coming next. So the, the, the shelter in its current functionality with the 30 beds will either close on January 10th, or it will close on March 31st. After that, the, the Housing Human Services Advisory Committee's subcommittee is going to be working on the homeless master plan. That plan will be complete, and then the, the larger site plan process for that new property will be created referencing back to our homeless master plan. So once we get through this emergency time of the governor's office, we, we need to take that time to do the planning for that site. And we don't know what that is going to be outside of the severe weather shelter will continue. It will, that is not a question that's up, that's up in terms of the master planning process. But the rest of it is part of that, that process. And so it will be empty. It will not be a shelter for a good period of time next year, even if we decide to maintain it as that type of shelter. It needs significant construction and infrastructure work.
So, so in between, thank you for the clarity. So March to June, nothing is happening. And then in June, hopefully, we'll have the information from our Housing Human Services. And so in that in-between time, our unhoused are...
Yes. Yes. There is going to need to be a transition plan for each of the people who are in that space.
So our hope is we will get this extension, and then we will know March 31st is the end date, and we can work with ORA to help transition people to housing, which they've been doing throughout this period. And it will be a set date. So I think prior to this, it's been maybe January 10th, but hopeful for an extension to get us through the winter. This will be a set date based on limitations of the building. And then there needs to be the bigger plan and the bigger discussion about investment in that building and what that building will be moving forward.
Yep, so the question before us is this authorization to Sabrina. And I just want to remind everyone that we do have one more topic, and we have quite a few folks who've asked to speak. Counselor Kaplan and then Counselor Hyatt and then Counselor...
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify one of the things that you said, I think, Mayor, that this building wouldn't be used. It would still be used for the severe weather shelter if it meets the thresholds for use of it, either cold temperature, hot temperature, or smoke. Regardless of whether the 24/7 portion of it is closed or not. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Counselor Hyatt?
Two things quick for Sabrina. First, ORA has successfully come alongside folks and got them housing from this short-term solution that we have put in place, yes?
Yeah, I believe they've had housing for at least four.
Okay. My second question is, the shelter continues to house children and their mothers?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
And so any other questions before we offer a motion? The floor is open for a motion?
Mayor?
Counselor Bloom?
Okay. Can I make a comment before I make the motion?
I prefer you to make some...
Okay, that's fine. I move that the mayor and city manager call an emergency meeting to review the terms of any potential grant and contract with service providers related to the continued operation of the 24/7 emergency order shelter until March 31st, 2024.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. The floor is still open for an alternative motion?
Can I second it for conversation?
The time has passed. Is there another motion? Counselor Kaplan?
Yep, I move to grant the city manager authority to accept grant funds, contract service providers, and execute related agreements for the continued operation of the 24/7 emergency order shelter until March 31st, 2024.
Is there a second? Counselor Kaplan?
No, I think, I'm appreciative of the city manager being on call and putting in place all of the elements necessary to get this continued in operation past January 10th.
Counselor Hyatt?
I just, I support this motion because I see the good work that it is successfully navigating. I also want to make sure we don't end up in a similar position that we were in two years ago when it was a challenge to re-home children who were in a facility that was part of a city-run operation. So I'm very sensitive to the needs of the children that are still guests at this shelter. I also recognize, though, that it is asking additional time of the neighborhood when we originally had advertised the date of January 10th. That is not lost on me. And I know that we still have some work to do with regard to the conversations around that. And I hope we will continue to stay diligent in that work as we pursue helping those who would have to go back out into the cold on the 10th to maintain a home to the 31st.
Counselor Dale?
Just real quickly, I appreciate the comments by Counselor Hyatt, and I understand that this is, again, we are, time is of the essence. One thing, though, that I would just like to add is that, you know, we asked the community for feedback on December 12th, and we received that feedback. And I think we have a duty and we owe it to our community to be transparent about how we're meeting those and that we've heard them. So I would like to, I would hope that along with a yes vote here, that we would also be proactive as a city, articulating and communicating to the city at large what we're doing and how we're measuring up to what we set out to do.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I understand the arguments for the city, for us to just authorize city manager to do this. The thing is, though, is that we have no idea what the terms of this grant might be. We have no idea what potential changes the contract service provider might have. It's very likely that they'll be the same terms and contract as, you know, we currently have. However, I think it's incumbent on this body and our responsibility to review those items before acceptance and not just go blindly in. I'm not comfortable moving forward with this until we have eyes on it, and for that reason, I will not be able to vote yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. When we entered this endeavor months ago, we made comments as a body that if we're going to do this, we're going to do this right with regards to the shelter. And I have spoke to many people in the community saying January 10th is our minimum. I understand that there are families, there are people, there are humans in this facility that are our guests. And now, given the reality and the gravity of that situation, I think part of doing this right is at least seeing this through to the end of March. And for the record, there are questions about this particular facility, and I appreciate all the work that staff and the community has put into this. And I'm still not convinced that this is the right place, the right asset for Ashland. I believe that an asset like this is imperative for us, but given that this bigger plan of the building and the needs that need to be addressed, don't be surprised if we pivot to another property if we can recoup our obligations to the state, which we got this money for. I'm just saying that a yes vote on this is for families in the shelter, and I'm committed to the community to say that we are going to do this right. And I can't say that this is a forever building for Ashland, and we will make this right. I know we will. But I trust that city manager will make these decisions, because I too don't want to approve a grant that we haven't read and stipulated yet. But in the interest of time, I really think it's imperative that we see this through for the families in that shelter and also steadfast to our community commitments around this building. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
No.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
So we have one further conversation, our agenda item on our agenda today, and we are not going to be able to get through it in the 11 minutes. Apologies to our staff who have stayed here for the whole time. We do have, we do have five people who have asked to speak, and given that they have stayed here, I would like to cycle them up and get their comments in so that we can have those and consider them as we, when we bring staff forward to have the deeper discussion early in the year. So with that, I would like to invite Rich Rodi and Karen Caldwell up first, followed by Bridget Heron, Helena Turner, and Debbie Nicewonder. Each of you will have two minutes. We have a hard, required stop at 9:30. We cannot, we cannot allow the meeting to go beyond that. So please, keep your comments to two minutes and transition quickly. Thank you.
Well, this is an important thing for two minutes. Rich Rodi, Ashland, I am absolutely opposed to lowering the threshold temperature to 25 for several reasons. One, we are making the unhoused, unsheltered people's life difficult through everything we've done tonight. And those are the folks that are going to be mostly affected by it. They're the most vulnerable in our community. The program that we did to formulate those original recommendations on emergency shelter was designed by a vast amount of people looking primarily at the health care happen, the health care of the people that would be affected by this. And it's clear, and you have testimony, that below 32 degrees, it really dramatically affects the health, especially of the people that are most vulnerable. This was designed by a huge amount of people that came together and unanimously, everybody was for taking it at 32. And it fits the health care priorities that we went through. This has come up with no notification. This comes out of nowhere, and we're going to make a decision that really will dramatically affect people's lives, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Caldwell, longtime resident of Ashland. And so adding on to what Rich just said, I'd say for myself, what I want to know about changing the threshold temperatures is what will it cost the people that we are trying to protect from severe weather conditions? I'd like to know firsthand what it feels like to be outside in those different temperatures, the high or the low or the, you know, whatever it is, for heat or for cold. So this week, when we have two nights when the weather shelter will be open and the rest of the week it will not be open, so we have, yes, open, not open. And I plan to spend time outdoors to see how it feels at different temperatures, depending on whether the shelter is open or not. I just want to know for myself what unsheltered exposure to cold feels like. It will not, of course, be like being homeless. I have a home. I can go to it anytime. But who knows what I might learn from my experience of sitting outside in the cold? I will be on the plaza, it's a well-laided space, Wednesday, tomorrow night. There's no shelter then. I will also be there again on Saturday, the 23rd. There will be a shelter that night. That gives me two different temperatures to experience. I'm going to sit on the plaza from about 8 until whenever I can't stand it any longer. And I want to invite you all to join me, any of you, anytime, particularly just as volunteers, you know, it's, you know, no biggie either way. But I just want to be able to have something that we can experience firsthand so we know a little bit about what other people are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget Heron and Helena Turner?
Hi, my name is Bridget Heron, and I'm an Ashland resident. And I honestly have always thought that the 32 degrees was kind of low. I mean, that's freezing temperatures. And I can't believe that you're considering lowering it to 25 degrees. I think it's inhumane, and I beg you to not do that. Just the thought of being out in 26-degree weather, you know, I mean, people who are unhoused, they're not using like high-tech camping gear, you know? They're dealing with not very comfortable things if their gear is wet. You know, if anything happens, people have their stuff stolen or taken away from them all the time. Like, it just, this is risking people's lives. And I know you want to save money, but this is, just seems cruel. This is, you know, people's lives are in danger. And it's, yeah, I think this is not something Ashland should be doing. I understand that maybe Medford and Grants Pass have the 25 degrees as the temperature, but honestly, they should be changing theirs to what our standard is, and we should not be lowering our standards to that. It's, this is, you know, causing the most vulnerable people in our population to suffer. I mean, if you think about it, like, what if your child was out sleeping, you know, in 26, 27, 30-degree weather? How would you feel? Like, would you feel comfortable about that? Like, I don't think so. I don't think that you would, and I don't think that we should do this to the unhoused people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Helena Turner, resident of Ashland. If you could get in close to that microphone, it'll help us hear you. Okay. Is that better? Yes. Thanks. Actually, I just want to second pretty much everything that you just said. I'm a nurse. I'm on the OHSU street nursing team, and so I am working directly with these people every day. And I see what happens when they're exposed to the cold temperatures. We have lots of our people who are losing their fingers and their toes. They get gangrene, and then we've even had some people die from the medical complications from that. So I'm extremely concerned when I hear that there is any thought of decreasing the temperature to 25 degrees. I agree, 32 degrees is inhumane in and of itself. Many people can get hypothermia even at 50 degrees if they're cold, if it's windy, if it's rainy, if they're wet. And as we know, our unhoused people are living out there in those conditions. Their gear gets wet, it gets stolen. They can't, they're incapable of keeping themselves warm, and they're at severe risk of death when the temperatures are at 25 degrees and 32 degrees, 40 degrees. I think it's an extremely bad idea to reduce the temperatures, and I agree. My first thought was, everybody else needs to get on our page, and in fact, all of us should be increasing the temperature to more like 40 degrees in order to do what I think this entire council has been saying they want to do, which is to be humane and to be caring towards our unhoused population, towards those who are most vulnerable in our population. That's what I keep hearing all night. I've been here all night, and I keep hearing everybody saying that they, you know, really want to have solutions to these problems and that we want to be humane and that we care about our population, and doing something like dropping this temperature is the exact opposite of that.
Thank you. Debbie Nicewonder?
Debbie Nicewonder here. I don't agree with the change in temperature threshold either, you know? And I'm looking at the summary, and under policies, plans, and goals supported, you have public safety. I don't see how lowering the threshold to 25 supports public safety. It's quite the opposite. Also, it's a lot warmer in Medford in the winter than in Ashland. And secondly, we had two folks on the night lawn last night with no tent, covered with tarp and a blanket. A lot of these people can't keep it together to have a tent and a zero-degree sleeping bag, et cetera, et cetera. So this doesn't make sense. To me, it's opening up a little bit of liability, and the only reason you're doing this is to save money. So money versus human life? And I also don't agree that we had 127 days under fiscal impacts from November 1st, 2022 to May 1st, 2023. I know when ORA was contracted for January 1st to May 1st, we had 65 days total. And from November 1st of 2022 to December, it was minimal. So I think your figures are wrong.
You have 20 seconds left. It's almost, it's almost up.
Holy cow, I don't want to blow it again. But also, what I was trying to say earlier, you all have been listening a little bit. We got the camera on the night lawn now. We appreciate that. And we also, they opened up another outlet in the back area so people can have charge phones in case we do have emergencies and whatnot. So I got to say thumbs up for that, but these ordinances...
Thank you.
No good.
Mr. Boyce, did you, I saw that, did you hand your testimony to Alyssa, or did you intend to come up at this point?
Looks like I got time, but I wouldn't come up, and I did send the testimony, and you guys all have the copy.
Okay, so let's make sure that we all get that copy before we leave. And we are at 9:30, which is our hard-stop time. So I will adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Happy holidays.